August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Select Board Regular Meeting. Make my announcement. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold?
Yes, here.
Dan Zwirko?
Yes.
Thomas LaCusa?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consisting of Chapter Twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature a resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. Join the webinar by phone, dial a star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. All right, we'll proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Select Board announcements. Connecticut River Valley drought status update, Level Three Significant Drought. Massachusetts Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, has declared a Level Three Critical Drought in the Connecticut River Valley. During the last several weeks, we have seen impacts on our municipal water system due to excessive demand for water. This is primarily due to irrigation of lawns. With rain levels much below normal over the last five months, the potential for drought exacerbated fires is steadily increasing. The Department of Public Works and the Fire Department have reported that the town will need an approximate twenty percent reduction, seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day, of water usage in order to maintain the level and pressure of public water supply needed for emergency management. Those wishing for more information on Long Meadow's drought status, voluntary conservation measures, and other water conservation tips should visit the town's water conservation webpage at www.longmeadow.org/waterconservation. Citizen petition articles. The Fall Special Town Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM at Long Meadow High School. Petition articles are due in the Select Board's office no later than twelve PM noon on September ninth, twenty twenty-two. In order for petition to be guaranteed placement on the Special Town Meeting warrant, one hundred names slash signatures slash addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. Forms and instructions to be used for petition articles are available online at www.longmeadow.org on the Select Board page. Petition articles will be printed in the warrant verbatim, so citizens are asked to review the forms and instructions carefully. Please contact Admin Assistant at longmeadow.org if you have any questions. September sixth, twenty twenty-two State Primary Election. The State Primary Election is scheduled for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, from seven AM to eight PM at the Long Meadow Community House, seven thirty-five Long Meadow Street. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is Wednesday, August seventeenth. The voter registration deadline for the September sixth primary election is Saturday, August twenty-seventh. Additionally, early voting will take place at the Long Meadow Community House on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, from nine AM to five PM, and Monday, August twenty-ninth through Friday, September second, from eight AM to five PM. Please email townclerk@longmeadow.org for more information. All right, we will proceed to Board and Committee applications, or, sorry, Board and Committee interviews. First up for a three-year term on the Audit Committee, Carol Martucci. Please have a seat right in the middle. Introduce yourself, say your name and address.
I'm Carol Martucci and I live at eighteen Fairfield Terrace.
Okay, Ms. Martucci, thank you for applying. Is this a new application or a reappointment?
New application.
Okay, and what interests you about the Audit Committee?
I work right now as the Director of Financial Reporting for a political subdivision of the state of Massachusetts. My background is, I was a former auditor early in my career and, and my job as, working as a Director of Financial Reporting, I prepare financial statements for a governmental entity that reports under governmental accounting standards similar to Long Meadow. I work on behalf of municipal light departments in Massachusetts, so I have a lot of familiarity with municipal financial statements. As part of my job, I help them prepare footnotes for their financial statements. Some municipal light departments function as an arm of the town or are folded into the town financial statements, so I have a lot of familiarity with the subject matter. I report to an Audit Committee as part of my job in charge of financial reporting, so I'm very familiar with how Audit Committees work. I have lived in Long Meadow for about six years and I'd like to provide services to the town. We're in an area where I have value to.
Given your jobs, are there any conflict with having an Audit Committee appointment in town?
No, because I don't maintain any kind of committee or board seats at any, I'm just, I prepare financial statements as part of my job, but I'm not on any other boards or committees that would give any kind of conflict. And while I help municipal light departments with their financial statements, again, I'm not in any capacity actually functioning as a municipal, so.
Thank you for applying. Have you had a chance to speak to anybody on our Audit Committee? Speak to anybody on our Audit Committee to see what they do and if, yes or no, is there any particular area of financial control that you're particularly interested in?
I have not spoken to anyone on the Audit Committee. I did review the Audit Committee Charter and the responsibilities, very similar in standard for what I would have expected an Audit Committee to be responsible for. In terms of interest, I, you know, I guess I am a bit of an accounting nerd. So, understanding the town's financial statements and seeing the inner workings is of interest to me and, you know, understanding what issues might be impacting, you know, the financial statements in town and being able to advise on those is of interest to me.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask you this question, but just so you know, Paul Festerzak, who's our former CFO, would have asked you, do you balance your checkbook for the penny? That all said.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your interest. So we don't vote today, we have to, we can't vote within seven days, so at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and given the number of people on here, we'll take any people who are, sorry, with multiple people, we'll do them together. So for the Board of Assessors, we have a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So it's actually two-year term. So it's replacing somebody.
We still list it as a three-year term.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so we have Richard Foster and Katia McGee.
It's actually only going to be Mr. Foster tonight. Katia is going to join us on September sixth. There was a late scratch from it.
I don't get to unconvulse.
All right, Mr. Foster, you know the deal?
Yep, Richard Foster, twenty-nine Captain Road.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster, for coming in. What has drawn you to the Board of Assessors?
I kind of rounded out the service. I've been on Capitol for years, Select Board nine, and I thought maybe it's a good way to run it up to twenty. Went on the assessors. I'm fairly interested in it. I thought I'd see if the town was interested in having me serve.
Mark?
Yeah, I think it's important for people here to answer. Do you have any appeals proceedings before the Board of Assessors or any that you anticipate in the next few months?
I don't, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Foster.
No essay.
Feel free to speak if you'd like.
I laughed with Mark because I know what he asks when we come before you guys if I'm on the committee, so I already know the answers to his questions, so.
That's why I didn't ask him.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. For the Building Committee, Pete Landon. Not here.
Oh, he's on Zoom, well, okay. Pete, can you please unmute your mic?
Hi, Pete.
I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted. I'm trying to get the video going. I don't need to, but if you want to proceed.
We've been, we've been having issues with the videos lately, so please go bring them to us.
You can introduce yourself.
Pete Landon and looking for a position on the Building Committee. And my background is, I led projects in healthcare, building a couple of nursing homes, renovating two hundred thousand square foot buildings. I've attended a number of Building Committee meetings during the period when we were building the Adult Center and the situation at the DPW. And therefore I, actually, I enjoy the work. Talk about wonks and, and it's, the work they've done is, and I know the Select Board started this committee a number of years ago with the intent that large projects would have some oversight and make sure the costs stayed in line and on budget, et cetera. So, I'm a fan of the Building Committee. That's where I come from. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark?
Pete, this is Mark Gold. Just a quick question for you. I know you serve on the Audit Committee. Do you see any concerns or potential conflicts between the responsibilities of the Audit Committee and responsibilities of the Building Committee?
No, I don't, Mark. I guess, no. Do you? I mean, you've got more experience than I have.
If, if something comes up, I'll, we'll let you know, I guess is the best way to say it.
Okay, the, speaking, when you asked the former candidate, I did read her, her background for the Audit Committee and it is stellar. She, she's spot on exactly what we need if you need some input from the Audit Committee on, on her candidacy.
Thanks, Pete.
All right, Pete, I always appreciate your insights, even if it's in the middle of an interview. Thank you, Pete.
Take care.
All right, for the Conservation Committee, do we have Patrick Gottschl? Okay. And for COA Board, Council of Aging, sorry, Council on Aging Board of Directors, we have our three candidates, Derek Parr, Candace Sarafino, and Eleanor Stoller.
Pick in order? Step up?
Oh, we can all come up.
No, I was just here. Thank you.
Eleanor, just get closer to that. That's a, that's an LCD, LCD microphone, not for us. That's good.
All right, if everyone in turn could introduce themselves for the record, your name and your address.
Candace Sarafino, five forty-six William Street.
Derek Parr, two eighteen Hopkins Place.
Eleanor Stoller, twenty-nine Meadow Road.
Okay, and we have some reappointments and some new appointments, is that correct?
I mean, new.
You're the new, okay.
New.
Oh, two new, okay, two new. All right, so what, what has interested you about the COA Board of Directors?
Well, I've lived in Long Meadow for twelve years this November and I chose this community because it's safe and it's friendly and I've enjoyed being in the community. I've been commuting a lot. I work at UMass Amherst, and so with COVID and high breeding, I now have more time to appreciate my community and to give back. So I'm excited about this, you know, joint in my life. I work with college students, helping them with their career paths and getting them ready for the workplace, and I feel like I have some transferable skills. I've served on a lot of committees. I've done a lot of programming for educational and social networking, and I feel I would love to transfer that and work with my contemporaries and work on educational and social programming for seniors.
Have you been taking advantage of any programming?
Not yet, no. But I did see the beautiful facility and I'm comfortable with Zoom and I think there's a lot of possibilities and I would enjoy bringing some ideas to the committee.
Mr. Parr?
Let's see, why do I want to do this? In ten weeks, I'm going to turn twenty, twenty-two, good, seventy-two. Which reminds me of all the stuff I get in all this, like the strangest adventure I've ever been on, because it's like puberty running backwards. Things get weaker and you have to think things through. I was a college professor for thirty-five years. Thirty-three I've been Springfield College and two of it in Nebraska. Licensed psychologist, had a small practice on the side. Let's see what else. I went to high school here. This is about where the soccer field was, if I recall correctly. I'd like to see an imprint of the old one over the new one. I moved back here thirty years ago, raised my kids here. What else? I have been involved with the Adult Center, which really is a hard thing to say. I keep wanting to say Senior Center, because we are. And I put together a program of getting really, really, really good writers from the area to come once a month to do readings from their books and stuff, and it's gone pretty well. I have twenty-five people each time. Have another one coming up Thursday if anyone wants to go. It's a good friend who's Mike White, remember him, I think, who has been a good friend for a long time, very good writer. And, I don't know, that's about it. I put together some programs. I was on the Mass Psych Association Executive Board for four years, Chair of the Psych Department for four years at Springfield College. I think I have something to offer and I'm old, so there you go. For Rick, what experience you have with group work and gerontology? A group work? God, I taught group dynamics for thirty-three years at Springfield College. Gerontology, I said I am one. And it is, it is the strangest, weirdest thing to say like, yeah, I can do that, and then find, have to wait two or three seconds to get ginned up to go do the thing that you could just normally do when you're younger. And I think another thing that with older folks, it gets lonely. You know, there's, their kids are grown, wives are gone, you know, that's another story. And, and like, how do you spend your day? And do you have friends, some of whom are dying, some of whom are incapacitated? And it's just a different, different way of doing things. I think I have some insight of that, being one and also having dealt with a variety of people doing counseling and psychotherapy.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you for your interest. Eleanor? How long have you been on the board?
It's about fifty-eight years, I think, fifty-eight, fifty-nine years. Well, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I'm the reason we have the ban, because I got the first ban free. Wasn't good, but we got a ban free and that was the beginning. And I made the first motion to look into a new senior center and we got that. And I'm just a little more senior than before and I'd like to continue. I don't know what I want yet, but I'll find something.
Any questions from Board? All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
For one three-year term on the Cultural Council, Caitlin Cronin and Claudia Musler.
And they're both on Zoom, so we're both.
Okay.
Can you both hear us all right?
I'm on. The video says it's disabled, but this is Caitlin and I can hear you if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Claudia can hear us? Claudia, are you able to hear us? Caitlin, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Okay, thank you. I'm Caitlin Cronin. I'm a fourteen or fifteen-year resident of Long Meadow. I live at two zero six Colony Road. And I'm applying for another three-year term after a three-year term on the Cultural Council. It was a great experience. We worked hard despite COVID to make sure we had good programming for the town, some in person, some virtual, and I really enjoyed it and I'd like to continue if possible.
Great. What was your favorite event that the Cultural Council put on while you were on the board?
I loved many of the stories library events, some of the concerts, some of the historical talks. I think one thing that we worked hard to do was diversify the outreach to other areas of town that necessarily didn't know we existed. So we worked pretty hard to get the word out there to the schools and newcomers and Long Meadow mothers and Long Meadow fathers. So we were able to get some more events through different elementary schools as well, which I was excited about. So bringing people up through the system, through the Cultural Council funding.
Thank you. Any other questions from Board, from Caitlin? Claudia, are you able to hear us or speak? All right, we'll see if we can get that figured out, otherwise we'll just push it to, I'll have to do another meeting for you.
Yeah, since she's, since she's unmuted, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Claudia, we will have to try another time with you. We're having trouble connecting or hearing you at least. All right, next up, Historic District Commission, Constance Ryder.
Hello.
Hi. Please introduce yourself.
Give me a second. I was getting there.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Connie Ryder. I'm at six eighty-one Converse Street and I've been living in Long Meadow about five years. And so why do I want to be on the Historic Commission? Why not? So the first primary reason is just an entree into getting more involved in the town. I've not been on this type of commission before. I was previously a resident in Springfield and I was on a very different commission. I was the, a member and then chairperson of the Disability Commission that we had in Springfield, and I was looking to do something different. I have an interest in maintaining, I, I lived in the Historic District in Springfield, by the way, and I'm interested in historic homes and providing the support necessary to continue maintaining historic homes, not just, obviously, on the part of homeowners, but providing the criteria when you want to make renovations and so on to, you know, to maintain. I firmly believe that looking back is a good way to move forward, you know, to look back. And, and I happen to be, at this point in time, I am a Realtor, so I happen to love houses. And I just have an affinity for colonial homes and older homes and, and that way of life, which is not to say there's nothing, anything wrong with newer architecture. I like that as well, but I just have a connection, just kind of an emotional connection. I've, I've always lived in older homes and I appreciate them.
Mark?
Thank you, thank you for applying. Is, is the house you live in part of the Historic District?
Not, not where I'm at now. No, 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 I'm right up by the, no, I'm up by the.
And I guess we need to look, because I think the Historic District Commission has categories of people, so many people have to be architects and designers and stuff like that. So we're going to need to see where that, where your application fits, and there is room for general applicants, I know that, so we'll just have to.
We're actually looking for a Realtor right now.
Oh, okay, so that, okay.
It falls with the criteria, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
A question. So as a Realtor, is there any way to calculate how much our Historic District might increase home values? Because, you know, people see a street like that and just think like, this is a great town, great looking town. Do you have any idea how valuable it is to have a Historic District like ours?
You know, at any other time, that would be a fabulous question. This is not that market. And you don't want to see a grown woman cry. So, for instance, I was just, this was not in Connecticut, but I was just looking for a home for someone in Heveron, Connecticut. And this gorgeous historical home, eighteen forty, wide board floors, yada, yada, eleven acres, and it's on for like, hmm, five ninety-nine. And the reason it's on for five ninety-nine mostly is because of the acreage. The home is nice, but, and it's beautiful for a colonial home, but it's very much, that particular home is very much a niche, is going to attract a niche person. It's a niche market, similar to log homes and so on. But the thing is, when you're in a town like Long Meadow or, you know, even Springfield, I mean, the, the historical homes, I mean, they're part of the fabric of the town, right? The history of the town. And again, I think you're going to be attracting a certain kind of buyer. And some of that sadly is what I call the HGTV effect. Home buyers are often looking, and I just hear it all the time, they, they're not able to, you know, see beyond, okay, it needs a little paint and, okay, steam off the wallpaper. But they want, you know, the quartz and the granite and the laminate and so on and so forth. And even when clearly a flipper has put down the thinnest of laminates on the floor, it's laminate, you know, the vinyl plank and, and so on. And, you know, it's going to be peeling off in three months, you know, so you have that kind of, that's very much out there right now. And then you have the folks that have that affinity for, you know, the, the older homes, for the historic homes. They certainly have a place. I think they have an anchoring effect and certainly need to be, certainly need to be maintained. But here's the thing, aside from this particular committee, and I'm just making a pitch in general. Prior, I've been a Realtor for twenty years next year, simultaneously with sixteen previous years as an educator. And prior to that, working in healthcare, case management, evaluation, I'm a rehabilitation specialist. And so, aside from, that was an interest in particular, but just throwing it out there, for some ungodly reason, I'm not on this particular committee. My, my strengths are in technical writing, managing, obviously, when you're a Realtor, you're, you've got a gazillion plates all spinning at the same time. That's true as an educator and also as a department head at Mercy Hospital. So I have a pretty wide range of skills that can be applied, and I'm not pigeonholing myself to this particular one. If there's a better spot that you think you'd need assistance with, I would certainly be open to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Connie. There's always a list of vacancies on the town website, if there's anything you're.
Right, well, I didn't really, and I should have asked, and you're applying for more than one, and I didn't, and I can, I can go back and do that.
Well, it's good to, good to start here at least.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
And finally, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Travis Lynch.
Good evening.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name's Travis Lynch. I'm at twenty-five Dover Road.
Okay, and you're applying for the Associate Non-Voting Three-Year Term for the expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Yes, that's.
Okay, and what's interested you about the ZBA?
Well, I'm an attorney and I work for the District Attorney's Office, so I do criminal law. I generally, I don't, I don't do land use in my regular practice, but I find, I find land use and zoning issues to be, you know, of academic interest, and I think that that would, that would, being on the ZBA would be a good way to, you know, get more experience with that type of law that I don't get to do in my regular practice. And at the same time, I've been living here since January of twenty twenty-one, so I'm still a relative newcomer to the town, and I think that with my, I do, I do criminal appeals and that sort of thing, so I look at a lot of, you know, highly detailed, you know, fact-intensive, detail-oriented work, and I think that it would help the town if, or I think I could be of some assistance to the town being on the ZBA.
I do do this in my day-to-day, so I commend you for having the, keeping the interest up.
My father was a real estate attorney, and he was on the ZBA in his town. We used to live in Winchester ages ago, and he got appealed to the Superior Court, and he was correct. So he, so that's, there's sort of like a, you know, family interest, not, he's not on the ZBA. He's not from around here, but, you know, so that's one of the other reasons why I'm interested, because I've heard, you know, about zoning stuff from my father, so.
Yeah, so our last person up here talked about the character of the town. How do you think zoning relates to the character of Long Meadows, the town?
Well, it does seem like the town is highly residential. I've, I've looked, I mean, I haven't, you know, I haven't memorized the entire zoning, their bylaws, I believe. There's two residential districts. I'm not really sure what the difference between them is, to be perfectly frank.
I think it's just frontage.
Oh, is that what the difference is?
Frontage and square foot, yeah.
Okay, because there's, okay, there's, on the map, there's a blue section, which seems to be most of the town, and then there's a brown section. I forget which one's which, but.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, well, well, color recognition, that's easy. But I didn't realize how little commercial area there was in town. I mean, I got the sense by looking, you know, by living in towns, I didn't, there's not much commercial here, but you really get a sense when you look at the map how little there is, you know. I'm not, you know, I don't know one way or the other. I don't know which ones, I'm sure there's, there's good things about having some commercial. There's, I don't know, but it does seem as though zoning is really important and really, you know, does heavily shape how the, you know, the town is, the fabric of the town, so.
Mark?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for applying, Mr. Lynch. One of the things I think that is the biggest concern to me and I think shows up at our ZBA is we've had changing zoning bylaws, and so we have a very, very large number of homes, which I guess you would say are currently not conforming with the current set of zoning bylaws, which make it difficult when somebody who lives in that neighborhood wants to do something to their house. And so my sense is much of what comes before our Zoning Board of Appeals are things that, you know, I don't know whether to characterize them as, you know, somebody wants to do something that, that, you know, the law, the strict application of the current bylaw says they can't do, but, you know, gee, they happen to be living in a, in the north end of house, of town, in the south end of town, you could have done it. So I think one of the things to become familiar with is, is some of those things. But we actually have an outstanding chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and some pretty good members, and I recommend that you give the attorneys there a call and talk to them and see what, what are the kinds of things that come before long.
I've read the minutes lately. It does seem like a lot of, the proposed change doesn't really conform with the, with the bylaws, but it won't hurt anything.
Somebody lives in a seventy-five or a hundred-foot frontage house, you know, can't do something that somebody who lives in a hundred-and-twenty-five or a hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage house can do, and that's, that's why they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, in my opinion.
Four factors, huh?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much for.
Thank you for your, your interest.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Appointment of Town Clerk.
Thank you. So tonight, I am pleased to present you Timothy Donnelly for appointment to the position of Town Clerk. Mr. Donnelly is here with us tonight, so if he'd like to have a seat at the front table. As you'll see from Mr. Donnelly's resume, which was attached to the agenda, he has held a variety of positions in public service. Mr. Donnelly most recently served as Financial Officer for the West Springfield Housing Authority, a role that he's held since two thousand and fifteen. In that position, Mr. Donnelly worked with federal agencies on the requirements governing local housing authorities and interacted with the public, tenants and vendors. In a prior public service position, Mr. Donnelly served as the Executive Director of Ludlow Community TV. In this position, he managed the town's Cable Access Department, created programming, covered public meetings and trained volunteers to use the equipment. Mr. Donnelly holds an Associate's Degree in Business Administration from Springfield Technical Community College and served six years in the United States Marine Corps. Mr. Donnelly has been a dedicated participant in town meeting in his home community, and I'm pleased to submit his appointment as our next Town Clerk to the Select Board for Confirmation in accordance with the Long Meadow Charter, Article five dash two B. And Mr. Donnelly is here with us tonight if you have any questions for him.
Mr. Donnelly, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And where do you currently live?
I live at one forty-nine Chapeau Street in Ludlow.
Any questions from the board?
So you would be in charge of elections, or the voting process. Do you have any experience with being in that, you know, collecting votes and having a process? You ever spend much time around that, or do you know anybody?
As I explained during interviews and stuff, I've done a lot of municipal jobs. I've done a lot of municipal positions, whether it be volunteer, working for the state now. That'll be done tomorrow, be the last day, but not particularly the clerk. My wife was in the clerk's office. Friends of mine are the Town Clerk and the Assistant Town Clerk over twenty-eight years in Ludlow. So I've been getting a wealth of knowledge from them. I've been a town meeting member since nineteen ninety-seven, so I'm familiar with all that. And I'm pretty familiar with what goes on in the clerk's office. I just need to know an outline of dates and stuff, and I've been doing a lot of research on that as far as that goes, and, you know, how right now you have the early voting, you have DABST voting going on as far as sending out the ballots and everything else. So I'm jumping in with both feet, but I feel very comfortable with it seeing as I have a wealth of people I can go to for any questions I have. There is, there is one thing that I, I am looking to ask of the board, or Lynn, whoever's got the strings on that one, is, is there a stipend? Because I do have the previous, or one of the previous presidents of the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association that is willing to kind of mentor me a little bit through the process the first time. Make sure, you know, she'll tell me, you got to get this report out. We're familiar with all reports, you know, doing all the different jobs. Every job's got different reports you got to send to the state, you got to send to the government for different things. I just want to make sure we get every T crossed, every I dotted. I'm kind of a little bit, to use the word, neurotic, anal, whatever, you know. My background is accounting, and I've been doing that since I was eighteen in the Marine Corps, so I like to make sure things are the right way and the right way the first time.
Okay, well, because we, we do have seasoned folks, you know, who, at election time, and we have people that supervise everything to make sure it goes clearly from each party, the Republicans and Democrats. So it should go pretty easy, but, you know, the last thing we want is to have anybody question, you know, our election process and how everything goes, so, but thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Well, first, I just want to thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you.
And then I was just curious why you chose a clerk's position. Obviously, you have a lot of good background in public service, but I'm just curious, what made you take this route?
Well, I've been doing state for a while, and I kind of want to get back to municipal. That's where my roots are. After getting out of Marine Corps, I did, you know, things in the town like lifeguarding, you know. Worked at the Police Department. Had to leave the Police Department because I created the first public access station. It was just a storage room. So I was volunteering on the Cable Committee, came up with, I got a lawyer involved, created the contract, and we went from making five thousand dollars a year from charter to getting sixty-four thousand, and now they're making hundreds of thousands of dollars a year from charter that the town never got before. So built that, then, you know, I mean, I was there for many years, and I just kind of want to get back to the municipal type feel. It's a whole different animal compared to the, to the state, which is a little more, I don't know, I wouldn't say not as friendly, but it's, it's, it's more of a, it's like kind of going back to the military a little bit more, where you're more person-to-person in a municipal setting.
We talk a lot about the elections from our Town Clerk, because that's kind of the most visible thing, but I wanted to ask a little bit about records and record-keeping, because from my perspective, that's kind of where the bread and butter of the Town Clerk's office is. We get a lot of requests from, you know, going back a ways, not, not hundreds of years, but, you know, for marriage licenses or birth, that kind of stuff. Do you have any concepts or ideas or experience on, on records, record-keeping, record filing up? And Lynn, I hate to say this, but have you, have you had a chance to see our records? Because we, because we did.
Yes, yes and yes. Yes, I have a lot of experience, like I said, with accounting and stuff. Your, other than working with the numbers, getting the numbers right down to the penny, you have to keep the records. You have to keep the payrolls. You have to keep, there's various ones you keep for life, and then some are three years. But the thing is, you have to have those because you're audited all the time. So I haven't had a ding yet on my audits, and we were at ninety-eight, ninety-nine point nine eight in the Marine Corps in the Fiscal Accounting Office I was in, because you can't. I don't know who made that mistake, but somebody did. But the thing is, you do keep records of everything. You have to keep, whether it be, you know, records of the bills you're paying, records of the payrolls, records of the taxes. So I'm quite familiar with keeping records, especially working in a municipal government, with the Police Department. You know, there's, there's, every, every aspect of my career has been where, when you're working for the government, you better be good at record-keeping. And I have seen the office over there, that unique filing system. That's one thing that I would like to take in when time allows, because right now, we're hip-deep in the election. We have to make sure that everything's being timed, timestamped, time-dated, because that's all part of the process. And as, I don't know how to pronounce your last name there.
Tom, oh, you said Tom.
As, as Tom said, you know, in today's world especially, you need to be accurate. And I think anybody with any kind of finance background, you know they're going to be accurate, because if they're not, they're not in a job, not for long. And with the voting, the way it is and the way our country seems to be polarized, you need to make sure that you're as transparent as possible and as accurate as possible. And you have to be open to the public, whether they, whether they got gripes or not, you know, or whether they're happy with you. Like I said, this is the part I like about municipal is that you can talk to them. You know, it's more of, you know, I don't like telling somebody something as much as explaining it, letting them know so that they, they don't stay angry, because when they learn why it's a certain way, it kind of takes the edge off a little bit, and they, oh, I didn't know that. Maybe I was a little bit off or whatever, but as I said in my interviews, you know, there's no reason to be gruff with anybody, you know. So, you know, that all combined with the accuracy of the record-keeping and everything else, I think is, is probably the top stuff right there.
Thank you.
Any else from the board? Okay, we have a motion here.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Town Manager's recommendation for the appointment of Tim Donnelly as Town Clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
I look forward to seeing you in the office.
Oh, I'm sure I will. All right, gentlemen, you have a great night.
Me too.
You need to stick around for anything, record-keeping. I see Mike over here just doing his job.
Trying.
All right, you have a great night.
You too, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to resident comments. Mike, do we have anybody on the list?
We actually, I forgot to print out today, but I believe we have some resident commentary here.
Okay, up first, remind you, we have three minutes.
Do my best. Larry Goldberg, one five nine Redfern Drive, here in town. I've been a lifetime resident, forty-plus years, and my biggest concern has been enforcement of rules and regulations in the town in the past probably ten years. We have people that are not enforcing certain code and zone rules, in my opinion, correctly. Going through the bylaws, the one for commercial overnight parking, it nowhere says that the resident is responsible for doing someone's job and turning in a neighbor. It doesn't say that I have to turn in Mike, Mark, Josh, whoever, and if I do, it's supposed to be anonymous. Now, the town is asking us to fill out a form, put our John Hancock on it, so that the town can tell the other resident that their neighbor's, let's say, ratting them out. Back in twenty twenty, I filled out a form, and the town enforcement person shared it with the resident. Within three days, they were on my door, banging on my door. I had to call nine-one-one rather than opening the door and getting a confrontation. I've driven around town in the past few days. I've got photos. People that have been fined and are still bringing home commercial motor vehicles. So I don't know what we have to do with the system. I think it was last year at the E W, we had the town meeting. The town voted in. They want this rule enforced. It's not being enforced the way it should be, plus, and I can think on the Police Department, but I see cars parked on sidewalks. When you call the new dispatch system, crews have to show up for an hour. I can't stick around. The dispatch says you got to stick around if you're going to file a complaint. So I don't know, I'd like to be on the agenda, like I talked to you about, Josh, another time when we can have more than three minutes, but I don't feel that, you know, listening to the other junkers here, being a lawyer, about zoning and the town not being so commercial, a hundred percent right. This is a residential community. I don't need to see dump trucks and chemical trucks and electricians and stuff. I built the garage. I spent seventy-five grand bringing home a work truck to appease the town. I can name two other people that did the same thing. Now it's not being enforced the way it should be. And asking the residents to do the person's job that should be doing it, so can I be on the payroll? Because I got a list of a hundred photos that should be enforced. And like I say, one of whom was cited, two years ago, I've shared the citation with Mark Gold, and him and his family are still bringing home the same trucks. So that means that the person in charge is not following them. Like I say, I think I should be on the agenda next time, because, you know, I'm running out of time and there's a lot more to talk about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
If anybody wants to see the photos before I leave, if I still have time, I can. If anybody wants to see the photos before I leave, if I still have time, I can look through a couple of the photos quick to show you guys.
We're at three minutes. Thank you. All right, anybody else?
I believe we have someone in this. Were you going to make comment, Dave? Were you going to make comment?
No, I can just hear probably a group closing.
Oh, that's coming at the, for the.
Oh, the next meeting?
Yeah, for Long Meadow Days. Yeah, that's on September 6th edition.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, Dave, Marin LA 9, Oak Brook Lane. I'm here because I happened to catch a select board meeting after the last town meeting where there was a review of what was done well and what we could improve on, and a point was brought up by a select board member that a little better communication between boards and committees and the select board on the CPC process might reduce confusion at the annual meeting. So I would say that the CPC, of which I'm a member, is very interested in improving communication, and, you know, the CPC season is starting. I'd like to point out that there's a balance in one of the funds, which hardly ever gets spent. There's a quarter million dollars in the Affordable Housing Fund. For those of you that may not be familiar with how it works, 10% of the funds every year get committed to each of four sub-funds. And it's been a while since we had a project for affordable housing. The CPC asked myself and Ron Manso, who's also on the Housing Authority, to come to the CPC with ideas for projects that the town could get behind. And the Housing Authority has had a couple of meetings this year, and we're very interested to hear what all components of the community would like to see us bring forward. Long Meadow is one of only six communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts whose housing authority does not administer any public housing. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have subsidized housing, because there are some private housing that's subsidized by the federal government, and that includes Emerson Manor and Genesis House. And, but, you know, I think everybody knows that Long Meadow is not really an affordable place for many people, and there are perhaps some opportunities to improve affordable housing in town, and we'd like to hear what sorts of projects, both the select board and town manager and other components of our community, would support.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mike?
That is it.
Any select board comments?
I want to bring the select board up to date on my favorite, least favorite subject, the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. At the last meeting, I think it was, or maybe the one before that, I reported that we had submitted a letter to them requesting that they submit to their directors and officers' insurance, you know, for reimbursement of money that was, we thought was improperly spent by a prior board. It was interesting that that day or the next day, there was an article in the Springfield paper about that. And as a result of that article, I guess, either, I know I got a letter from the chair of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board saying, "Letter? What letter?" I never saw a letter. And to make a very long story short, about a week later or so, the letter was returned to our town offices, not delivered and not claimed. I guess it was technically, the post office would say, unclaimed by the Hampton County Retirement Board. And I won't get into what the process was and why it wasn't claimed, but to just follow up, the letter was hand-delivered to them. So I have delivered it, and we haven't heard back from them, but I just think it's fair that everybody understand this, that for some reason, the letter did not get to them, whether it's because they didn't accept it or because the post office didn't deliver it, I don't know, but they've got it now. So that was, that's my comments.
Tom?
Well, since our last meeting, I'd like to thank Lynn, our town manager, for giving a tour of all the town-owned buildings. We started at, well, the DPW, but we covered all, the oldest building to the newest buildings. And it was, I think it was a good orientation for select board members to see exactly what we're dealing with, and it's, you know, there's some buildings that are underutilized, and hopefully we'll get to address that in the future. But it was a really good experience. I want to thank you, Lynn, for having the board do that. That's the first time we've done that since I've been on the board, and I don't know if anyone's ever done that before. Mark, has that ever happened before?
Not in that, not to that extent.
Not to that extent, no. That was really good. Also, I want to thank you.
We went down to the sewer pumping station. We haven't done that before.
Yeah, we went to the sewer pumping station, everything. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, real quick, so I actually received an email for the Long Meadow Fall Festival, and apparently they're going to do a parade, and they wanted the Board of Selectmen to march in that parade, which would take place around 8:30 on August 8th, starting promptly at 9:30, so.
Can't be August 8th, that was last week.
I'm sorry, October 8th, I'm sorry. So I did say that I'd make a comment about that.
They do need, no, they need a parade for it?
That's what he was here for, right?
That's for, that's for something totally, that's for a street closure for the interior combustion. That's going to happen on your next meeting agenda.
Okay. That's the Saturday?
Saturday morning, yeah.
Interesting. And I, we have, it's no news to anyone that we have not had a lot of rain. You can see all the dead lawns around town or dormant lawns. Lynn's going to get into this a little bit later, but I just want to urge people to be cognizant of their water use. The, we've been harping at meetings, but the issue, if nothing else, we can't fight fires if we are using too much water. And I just, I want to make that in as plain English as possible. We don't want to see any, lose any buildings, any houses in town, but that's really important. And just, I think that's, if I can appeal to anything else, it's that. That's it for me.
Just to add, I was in the Boston area this, a couple days ago, and they have, it's at a level five on their drought, so we're still at three.
So it could be worse. Okay. Town managers' report.
Thank you. So the Town Manager's Newsletter. A new communication tool was launched last week called the Town Manager's Newsletter. Each month, the town manager's office is going to distribute a compilation of updates on a variety of topics. The newsletter will provide residents the opportunity to learn about new projects, general updates, and much more. To enroll directly in email notifications for the newsletter, you can visit longmeadow.org to sign up, or if you're looking at the Town Manager Report online, you can just click that hyperlink. Please feel free to share this newsletter with your friends, family, and neighbors. When signing up, you're going to be prompted to enter your email and confirm your email address. Sometimes that first email goes to spam. And so this newsletter is an email-only newsletter. This is a quarterly legal update. There's a table here in my report that shows you where we were in April and where we are now. Some of the accounts have slight changes to them, including cable, the gas-related work, and some of the other matters. The biggest increases are in our DPW eminent domain and 21E case. Labor Council had an increase due to collective bargaining that's taking place, and Town Council also had an increase over the last update in April. Greenwood Pool, this is a follow-up from the August 1st meeting. There were questions regarding funding and whether funding sources could be changed to the CPA funds. We did follow up with the Community Preservation Coalition. There is a no supplanting provision of the CPA. This is to keep funds from mixing from CPA to the general fund. So if a project has already received appropriation from town meeting from another funding source, the funding source cannot be switched to CPA, even if the money has not yet been spent. So regarding whether the pool liner is an eligible project, the Community Preservation Committee would have to make a determination on allowability, but it's a moot point because the fact, because the funds cannot be changed to CPA. A WestCom update. The Board of Directors had a reorganization vote last Friday. I was re-elected chair of the board for another two-year term. The executive director, Aaron Hastings, was recently elected president of the Massachusetts Communications Supervisors Association. This is made up of 84 public safety agencies and represents over 200 municipalities. And two WestCom staff were selected for a 2023 State 911 Department Leadership Scholarship. The scholarship's awarded annually to five recipients in the state who have displayed outstanding commitment and professionalism in the 911 industry. It's a grant award that allows both employees to attend a six-month Communication Center Manager course, two weeks of which are spent at an in-person training in San Antonio, and the remainder is completed online. So it's pretty impressive that two WestCom employees out of five in the state were selected for this. And a public shade tree cleanup update. So over the years, with the changes that we've seen in staff at the DPW, public shade tree cleanup, as a result of storm damage, has been handled differently amongst the different DPW divisions. After reviewing this issue and speaking with Town Council, we're going to deploy a consistent approach. If a public shade tree is damaged as a result of a weather event, only damage on the public way or sidewalk will be cleared. DPW will not enter private property to clean up the tree. The town should only enter private property to remove a fallen tree and be obligated to pay for any property damage if the tree was rotting or, and decaying for a substantial period of time, and the town was on notice in advance of it falling. Municipalities are treated in the same manner as a natural person with regard to their liability as landowners. If a healthy tree falls onto adjoining property, an adjoining property owner's property, regardless of whether or not it causes damage, it's considered an act of God, and the town is not liable and should not enter the property to remove the tree. Obviously, the town would have an obligation to remove any fallen tree from a public way, including a public sidewalk, under its obligation to keep public ways free of defects for travelers. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out tonight because there has been inconsistency in how it's been handled in the past years.
So just, I wanted to first give kudos to you and Mike on getting the newsletter out. I've heard from a lot of people that that's, they really enjoy that. I think that's very useful, so thank you for that. On the shade tree, do we know what is meant by substantial period of time in advance?
I think that's up for interpretation. So this is language that came directly from Town Council.
There's probably case law. I just never really think.
Absolutely sure there is.
So it's probably a reasonable, whatever it is, okay.
Similar to a pothole.
Right, okay. Tom?
So it seems like many, many years ago, we made the decision to go with WestCom. Instead of having a dispatcher in the town, in the police department, that we have this WestCom dispatch center. And one of the things that we were hoping would happen is exactly what was announced tonight by you, that folks are going to be going to cutting-edge training involving two weeks, you know, person-to-person and then so on. And because that was the whole thing, is we said, gee, if we had a regional call center that people could do a better job and get better training. And so it's really exciting to hear that that's finally happening, that we weren't abandoned by the state, you know, that we were, you know, we're getting this kind of training for folks. That was really good. The other thing is in Chief Stock's report, he talks about Sergeant Lombardi met with Behavior Health Network and the law enforcement coordinator, and he talked about connecting our police department with mental health professionals. And one of the things it talks about is having mental health professionals ride in police cars, you know, on occasion, which allows officers to ask a lot of questions. And then if a situation came up, they'd have someone right there. And this is a direction we need to be going in, and I commend the chief and Mr. Lombardi for moving this direction, and I hope that, you know, that we hear more about this, because unfortunately, the police are the ones who have to, when there's a person with a mental health problem, the police can't say, no, it's not our problem. The police have to intervene, and so it's great that they have, they're moving in this direction of getting the best training they can, so. So this is great news. Thanks for your report.
Mark?
Lynn, I just want to go back to the shade tree cleanup, because you're right, it is a change. How are we going to, I know you never contact everybody in town and communicate it, but invariably, it seems that the person who we don't get to is going to be the next person who has a town tree fall toward their house, and I assume this town's now going to come and cut it at the six-foot level or wherever the town's right-of-way is, and the rest of it is theirs to clean up, I assume. So how are we going to go about making sure we communicate this as broadly as possible? Because that's a, that's a very big change for a lot of people.
In some cases, yes. In some cases, no. Some parts of the DPW have been doing it this way. Other divisions have not, so that's been an inconsistency. It will be covered in the next edition of the Town Manager's Newsletter. We can certainly do some social media for it, and if the board wanted, we could look at doing an insert in an upcoming water or sewer bill.
I just think that it's, because of the number of trees, the number of times this has happened, I mean, I can think of two or three examples of town trees that have fallen toward people's houses, and we had one where it was left on, you know, literally the town cut a path through the sidewalk, and there was a lot of controversy about why the town didn't clean up their tree. I just think it's important for, I'm not arguing with the policy. It's consistent with if your neighbor's tree falls on your house, you know, they only clean up their side of the yard, and you've got to clean up your side of the yard, even though it's their tree. But I think we've got to communicate it somehow.
Yeah, if anything, so people can point out their decaying trees to the town. They can take care of it before something happens. Saves us some money.
That's likely to happen.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Lynn. Moving on to old business, approval of the July 18th, 2022 minutes.
We approve the minutes of the select board for July 18th, 2022.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Drought, as I promised, drought status update, level three, critical drought.
Great. So tonight I do have a little bit of an update from our last meeting. We have elevated from a level two to a level three drought. We were, all of us in the Water Conservation Internal Group, were on a call last week with MEMA, there was officials across the state on this call. It is quite staggering to hear what impacts some other communities are facing, especially with fire and the challenges, especially in the upper eastern part of the state. There's some fires that have been burning there for two months that they're trying to continue to stamp out. Hopefully, that's, won't be the case here, but the, there was predictions for rain this week. That has all since evaporated. We're not going to see that rainfall that they were predicting. So with the elevation to a level three, some of the things that we've done, we've drafted a door hanger, essentially. So DPW staff are on alert now if they see people not following the suggested or voluntary watering schedule, or if they are, if their sprinkler head is malfunctioning and it's watering the roadway, they will stop and leave a letter in the resident's door advising them of the drought situation and some recommended watering modifications, and then a phone call number to, if they have questions to the DPW. So those will be delivered, you know, as DPW sees them or as residents call to the DPW and let them know that they've identified an issue somewhere. We will be addressing that. One other thing that we were able to get confirmation from Mass DEP on late last week is that in the absence of a bylaw, there is no enforcement provisions. So anything that we do is voluntary. So what we will be doing is working on redrafting the Water Conservation Bylaw and removing what appeared to be the most controversial issue. and removing what appeared to be the most controversial issues of that bylaw and putting forward a stripped-down version of it for the Fall Town Meeting that would purely just address these level drought increases in drought levels so that we did have some enforcement authority. So you can expect to see that hopefully back at your September 6th meeting for discussion. We definitely want your feedback on it because I know that you all had a lot of concerned residents reaching out to you about it in advance of the annual town meeting. So we want to make sure we get something right and we get it put forward to the Fall Town Meeting so that if we are in this situation next spring, we do have a mechanism to require enforcement. So that is where we are with the drought update. We have had some really great feedback from some residents who have called and said that they are complying and their whole street's complying and they are taking this seriously. And our water tank levels are pretty much holding steady at, you know, the level that concerns us, but we're not seeing it go below that.
I noticed the press release last week that went out still had the odd and even days that Mark brought up as an issue. Did you hear back from the Water Department that that wasn't something we could really address?
We actually heard from some residents who said that their system did allow them to do odd even. So it does seem to be depending on your system and the age of it or the type of system you have. So it is possible depending on your system.
Tom?
Well, we took the tour of where the water tower is, and since then, I talked to a prior member of the Select Board, Bill Loew, and he was saying that he was in a situation where what they built is a $600,000 tank, you know, a concrete structure, like a cistern, and they could pump water in there. And then when they, if there was a crisis and you needed to have water for the water pumps, you could pump from that up to the water tower. He said it would, it doesn't make sense to have a second water tower, but that is one solution that, you know, we may want to think about at some point in the future if we were really concerned. Because then he says you could just take that, you could just pump that water up, you know, to make up the basic shortage, you know, so it sounded interesting.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Lynn. DEI Advisory Committee Charge. I don't know if Corinne, maybe go ahead today.
Right, right. So Corinne is not here tonight because it was just a modest change that you asked for at the last meeting, which she did, and the updated memo is attached to your agenda. It was a change from the membership numbers to solidify it with the seven that you discussed at the last meeting.
And it also has the DEI-related SMART goals for the committee, which is something we asked for, I think that will be helpful.
So do we need a motion to accept this?
Yeah, we need a motion to put it into place. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we set the charges Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee as written in the memo that was given to us by Corinne.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, sewer winter averaging.
Thank you, I'll just, if you're okay with it, I'll announce.
Oh, sure, please.
So tonight, we have an update on the sewer winter averaging project that started a year ago. I did, we are on schedule. When we launched this initiative a year ago, we did need to have a full year of quarterly billing. We're approaching that full year, and now we have an update for you on possible implementation of that sewer winter averaging. I did ask Lisa Oxon, the DPW Business Manager, to attend tonight's meeting to help give you an explanation and the public an explanation on what could be expected if this implementation were to move forward. There is a lengthy memo attached to the agenda. For those watching at home tonight that want to follow along, it is linked there, and it will, Lisa will walk us through it, but it will give you some examples of what could be expected depending on the type of account that you have if this were to move forward.
Thank you, Lisa. Did you put this together?
I did.
Very good.
Thank you.
I was, even a dunce like me was able to follow through, so go ahead.
So currently, our sewer is billed based on water usage. We do have a 220, 100 cubic feet cutoff for sewer. So a lot of residents who hit the 220 usually in the summer months, then stop paying for sewer in the end quarters. What was voted or put forward was to move towards winter averaging, which would mean that we take the two, or we take winter months, average together the usage and use that in the place of what their summer usage was. And the idea of that would be that summer watering isn't actually going into the sewer. So a lot of residents say I shouldn't be paying for sewer usage on the watering that is on the lawns and the pools, things like that. So I did give it a few examples of, you know, if a quarter was, you know, four units, then the next quarter was three units, add them together, you get seven, divide by two, it goes to 3.5. Our accounting system always rounds down. We did have a consultant in and he could not figure out how to make it not round down. So it's a slight concern that everybody is always on the lower of their two, usually equals a half, and they all round down. I gave you some examples of what was set up as we used the average. So what we did was the April through June bills did go out to residents, but we did, in a training database, made that stimulated like it was a winter average. So you could have done that your first summer quarter would have been your April through June, and we compared to what was actually billed to see what type of change does that make in the system. So most residents do have high water usage in the summer, and by putting it to the average, a lot go down. We billed 220,943 units. If we had used the winter averaging, it would have been just 99,450. So that is a big drastic change in how many units get billed. And because of that, you would have to look at raising the rate to make sure that we're still getting the income that we need for the enterprise account. We did have accounts that had no change, so that means they probably don't do outdoor watering. What they used in the winter is what they exactly used in the summer. And we did have accounts that used more in the winter than they did in the summer. They could be people who go away for the summer, they have a summer home, or they could be maybe selling the house that's vacant right now. So those accounts in the averaging actually charged them more than what they actually used. So I did give you that there are some other options to do in the accounting system. You could pick the lesser, so the current or the average, whatever is the lesser that they get billed that. There were accounts that actually saw a negative sewer usage, and that usually comes into play if we had an estimate, meaning we couldn't read the meter and we had to make an estimate. The system sort of guesses what it will be. And so then the next quarter goes negative if we overguessed. But I would say that we could manually override anyone that has a negative. We do have residential accounts who get another municipality's water, so we go and get the meter reading of their water and use it as the sewer. Because we don't supply the water, their service isn't set up as, based on another service, so the system didn't automatically average those because they think you have just a meter for the sewer and it's not based on the water usage. So the difference is, the original motion was to have a five-month winter average. Because we went to quarterly billing, we have what stimulated is a two-quarter winter average, which is really six months or three and a three added together. There was also that we wanted to fill in any zeros with the average of the town, and right now, the system is just dropping the zeros from the average. So if they had a zero quarter and a four, it would go to the four. I looked a little bit at what the rate would have to be. So currently, we have $2.275. If we went to this, I'm looking at at least a 39% increase to just cover, to get the same amount of revenue that we would need for the fiscal year. This is obviously if we put it into effect for the next quarter, we would only have one averaged quarter. Where in the next fiscal year, we would have two summer averages that are using the winter. So most residents would see savings in the summer quarter. However, their winter quarters start to go increase because you had to increase the rate. So if I gave you a few examples of low users, medium users, high users, on average, everybody's going to have to pay way more because there's no longer the 220 cap, and we raised the rates, so their winter starts to be much more expensive. Want me to go through anything more? You got questions?
Mark?
Lisa, thank you. This is really great. I got a thousand questions.
All right.
But I first have some comments because I think people, and we have some new members of the Select Board who weren't around at the time we did this. The intent of the Select Board, in my opinion, was to address the issue of people paying for sewer fee for water that wasn't going down the sewer. And after a lot of work, the five-month average with many caveats was agreed to. And the reason for the caveats were the, if you will, the exceptions or the adjustments were several, and I still think those are valid. One is, we have a good deal number of people we call "snowbirds" who have zero water usage for extended periods in the wintertime. And, you know, the response to that was, we thought we could put in the town-wide average for their monthly use in the wintertime. So if you had a zero water use in the wintertime, your sewer use in the summer would be based on the winter average, not a zero. It doesn't appear that the system you're recommending is able to do that. And so, you know, it's, for me, that's problematic because we're now going to carry over. If you have a month or two months in that three-month period of time with zeros, the month may come back with an average of one. And then even though that one month you were there happened to use three and you should be using three for the three months. And so I think that's a, potentially, a real problem for me because it, we've gone from being concerned about people who might be paying for something that they're not using, which is paying for sewer that water's not going down the sewer, exchanging that for people who are not paying for something they are using. And to me, that's even more problematic when we have people not paying for sewer usage that they really are using. You also pointed out a couple of things about potential summer users who go away for the summertime and what that, what happens when their actual summer use is actually lower than their, you know, the winter average. And, you know, we always thought that we would use the lower of, and I guess you can still do that. But, you know, so I'm concerned that going from five-month average to six-month average, given the constraints of the system, are exchanging one problem for another. And so, you know, I go back to the original issue. The original issue, and at the time, our sewer fee was 266, it's now 275. The maximum people were complaining about were getting 220 times, was a 585. So now it's $600 bill. And people are saying, well, I got a $2,000, you know, weird at all, $2,000 water bill or $1,500 water bill or some, you know, they weren't going to save $2,000, we're never going to save $1,500. The maximum they could save was a fraction of that $585, which is now a $600 maximum sewer bill. And so now that we look at what the system can really do, I'm concerned that we're just exchanging one series of issues for another and am concerned there may be a better way to do this. The other thing I want to point out is that, and I haven't shared this, but it's something that a long time ago I did share, that if we went to the five-month winter averaging, when the water rate was 266, at that time, we thought there were 671,000 units. We said if we went to winter averaging based on our calculations, we'd have gone from 671,000 units all the way down to 324,000 units, which is a substantial drop. And therefore, our unit cost to keep it revenue-neutral would have gone from 266 to 551. I mean, it would have been 100, you know, over-doubling in water rates. And my personal justification was, but now all these people are paying for what they're actually using, that's the actual cost of sewer disposal, you know. But the individual who was a minimal user year-round was paying, you know, $20 for sewer fees, was going to see their sewer fees double. And the only justification we had was, but that's what it really costs. But now we're getting to, you know, the potential proposal that says, well, there still is inequities because of the five-month, because we have to go to six-month averaging, and we can't, you know, we can't deal with zeros in individual months of the winter because the system can't deal with that. And I'm starting to think that the number of problems that we're introducing is equal to or greater than the number of problems we're potentially saving or solving. And so what I did over the weekend is I went back and took another look at this. And, you know, we now have a 220-unit cap. And I don't, you know, Paul's here, he probably knows where that came from. But I actually took a look at all 5,400 bills, and it was interesting that around 160 units, it was pretty clear that people using over 160 units, there was a strong component of what I'll call summertime surge in water usage, probably irrigation, you know. Between 140 and 160, it was questionable. And I actually have the number of people who fell into each category for doing that. And so the question I have is, now that we've put you through all this work and we understand what we really can and can't do, and frankly, I'm going to sit on the fact that although Richard Foster did a lot, I did the bulk of this work early on, I'm no longer happy with the solution we came up with. And that's a pretty big admission for me because I spent, if I spent 50 hours on it, that's minimal. I spent a lot of time on this. But the solution, based on what we can implement, stinks. And like I said, it creates more problems than it solves. And I'm wondering if we're not better off incrementally lowering the cap with the comment to the people who we said, gee, we promised we're going to winter averaging, whatever it is, saying, look, the number with $600 was your sewer bill. That was your maximum sewer bill. You were never, ever, ever going to save 600 bucks on your bill. But even if you were going to save 400, that's the most you were going to save. And if you had a $2,000 water bill, you're still only talking about, we're only going to impact it by a fraction of that $600. Can we go back now and say, let's lower that 220 cap? And, you know, I hate to do this because it's like we're the 11th hour and we said, let's implement it, let's go to all this stuff. But at the time, it didn't seem to me like it was a problem. And I will say to the Select Board, we have another alternative. And it seems to me that we can do exactly what we want to if we authorize monthly billing. But I got to tell you, just do the math, 5,000 bills, talk, I don't know, dollar bill, even if it's more than that. Dollar bill, and we need eight more bills. So we're talking about, you know, $40,000 more in billing to do exactly what we want. Does it pay for us to unnecessarily pay, give or take, $40,000 in additional billing to get exactly what we want? Because based on what Lisa's analysis was, and I absolutely believe it and I agree with it, was that the only way to do what we want is with monthly billing. And short of that, the quarterly billing cycle can, it really does create more problems than it solves. So I've said what I came here to say. I've got all the analysis. I can tell you if you do a cutoff instead of 220 at 200, at 180, at 160, at 140, I've looked at all of those, what it does to the billing, how many people are impacted by it. I've done all that over the weekend, but that's not important. What's important to me is this potential solution, given the constraints of munis, is very problematic. And I think it's terrible, and I'd like to undo it.
So your original question, where you started this question, you know, so we originally said folks who had zero in those, in the winter averaging would get plugged in a certain number. And, you know, Mark was asking, what went wrong with that? Do you have any response?
I don't think the system allows for it. So, because we have two quarters, he was looking at like if you had one month of a zero, it was plugging in, and then it was averaging all six months.
Yeah.
Where we have two quarters, it, three months are added together, so you got one number and three months are added together. Three months are added together, so you got one number, and three months are added together, so you got another number. So it can't plug in for one month because it... The system doesn't know what the one month was. And then if it's just the whole quarter was a zero, the system only knows how to drop it. It doesn't know how to replace it.
Oh, so... Because our instructions, you know, when we did this, we said, "We can't have that happen. We can't have people who had zero." And then, but the computer says, "That's just gonna drop it," you know?
Yeah.
And that, Tom, I mean, I've read through this a thousand times, and that's exactly what the issue is. I mean, you know, somebody who's, you know, who's, let's say, a five-unit user. And so normally, they'd be 5, 5, 5, 5, 5. They go away for two months in the wintertime, they have 0, 0, 5. They come up with a 1.33, rounds down to a 1. So now they have a 1. And so in the summer, instead of them being a five-unit for those three months, they got 1. And, you know, and so instead of being 5, 5, 5, 15, they've got 1. And that's the problem we'll be creating of people then using the sewer and not paying for it, as opposed to the people we have now, which is paying for it, not using for it.
The question is, can we override a computer in some way? But Paul, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest maybe...
You're right.
There is the option for minimum average usage. That is a fill-in. But then again, if someone goes away for the summer, you're now charging them the minimum when they weren't here to use it.
Do all their towns have a minimum on sewer?
A lot have flat rate. Not all go based on water usage.
Have Mark...
You can go tiered rate based on water usage.
That sounds easy, Paul.
So, Mark, first of all, I commend... You've been working on the water and sewer stuff for, I don't know, 20 years probably? And it's probably the most complicated thing, right, that we have to address? Have we looked at a tiered rate solution? Where you have to pay to use your water at the base?
No, we didn't. We... To my understanding, we'd never look... I mean, I remember Alex Grant was on the board, he insisted on a tiered rate, but we'd never got beyond that. I mean, a tiered rate would say, you pay so much for the first, so many... But that's water, and I think that's pretty worthwhile looking at if you want to, especially if you encourage water conservation. But frankly, Dan, not to get too, you know... We're talking about sewer, which is... I don't... I have no clue how you tier sewer rates. In other words, so much for the first sewer, and so much for the next sewer. And, I mean, the alternative is a flat sewer rate, but is it fair that a single homeowner who, you know, may not have a dishwasher, doesn't wash their car, doesn't water their lawn, is paying the same for their sewer fee as somebody with a family of four who's using water year-round? You know? And the assessment was, "Based on water." And so fundamentally, and, you know, I mean, just so people hear, back when we were having this debate here, you know, Richard Foster was strong for this winter averaging. I supported what I called "winter maximum." I thought if you had one, because that did away with all the averages and the zeros you didn't have. If you had one month in the winter where you used a lot, that's... That was your capacity, and that's what you get billed all summer. But be that as it may, it's at least it's a pay for what you're using as opposed to, you know, a flat rate for everybody. So the answer is, we have not been tiering sewer rates, and I don't know how we do it. And even, you take, you know, whatever the number is, it takes 1.8 million or 1.9 million to run our sewer department. That's the sewer department in the Casper City Spring Bill. I mean, we could take that, divide it by 5,400 customers, and everybody gets a flat sewer rate, but that's not fair. And to some degree, you know, our sewer bill currently has a sewer fixed charge for... Which was intended for infrastructure, for things like bonding, bond fees and stuff like that. We could increase the fixed charge if we wanted to, and that would make this less important, but we still have to deal with the difference between people who use more sewage and from people who don't use more sewage. And maybe this answer of lowering that maximum cap, you know, and like, Paul, I'd love to know where 220 came from. I think somebody looked at it and said, "That's about the break, maybe."
That's been in place for 35 years, and I want to believe it was there when I started back in the late 80s. Where it exactly came from? I don't know, other than, you know, there was a recognition that watering of lawns was not going down the sewer, and they wanted to give the break payer a break.
But I think, Lisa, maybe you can look at it too, but, you know...
I'm not sure, but the 220...
220, there's a lot of people... Just so you know, there's 904 customers who exceeded 220 units, okay? If you look at how many people exceeded 160 units, that number goes from 904 to 1,743. So there's an additional 840 customers who are between 160 and 220. But, you know, I mean, there's people throughout the spectrum of this thing, how much water they use. But, you know, the 9... The 220, they're what I call mega-users and mega-orders and stuff like that. But maybe what we do is, as a first pass, we cut down this from, you know, substantially. Like I said, if you went from a 220 cap, you know, down to a 160 cap, the water rate would have to increase. You went to a 160 cap, the water rate would have to go up 35 cents a unit to bring in the same amount of money.
The water or the sewer?
The sewer rate, I'm sorry. Thank you. If you went down to a 140 cap, you'd have to go up 56 cents a unit. 56 cents a unit is, you know, is 25 or... It's about 30%, something like that. You know, it's annoying to the people at the low end, but it truly reflects the cost of sewage. And so justification is, that's what you're really paying. I just think that this is a way of telling that person who's paying $600 for sewage because they're watering their lawn, "We're gonna lower that $600, you know, down to $300, but that's as low as we can go."
I think part of the problem, though, with the cap is it's hitting at their first summer quarter because we reset on the fiscal year. So they have a high water bill, and then to have the full 600 of their sewer all in that first bill, and then the next bills all are zero, because we had like 28 residents that hit the 220 limit just here in the first quarter. So they all are upset that their bill is so high. The next bill will be low because there's no sewer usage, but it's that impact of that first bill that they have the full... I wouldn't say the full flat would be...
But when you explain that to them, do they say, "Thank you," or do they say, "I'm still mad"?
No, they're still mad, and they said, "Well, it should have been a calendar year because the summer one is the one that it starts at."
But they just not notice it was two bills a year, right?
Yeah.
Well, I just, a couple of things. One is, of course, the folks who are using the most water are, you know, like the major employers in town, you know? But the commercial rate did go up, so, you know, I think the system has helped us. Now, when I would do... When I handle data, we could do a switch. Like if a zero showed up, you could say, "Okay, if this shows up, turn to 3.5." I mean, can't a computer do that? Can't you...
I don't think our accounting system can. If I exported it, found them, and then manually overwrote them.
Because if you had a data set...
See, the problem is, Tom, they want to do this all automatically in units as opposed to... You wanna hide it, look at it. We know exactly what we want to do.
Yeah.
Right. We have to be able to do that. We don't have enough staff to manually do this every quarter. So we need to make this as automated as possible. One other way that a lot of other communities do this, Long Meadow does it very differently, is set up a cap like that, community's bill for 80% of water usage. So the sewer bill is 80% of what your water bill would have been, or whatever percentage you decide you want to split out. And that's to... That is the realization that 20%, 25%, 10%, whatever number you want to choose, doesn't go into our sanitary sewer system. That is a calculation that MUNIS can do.
Lynn, the problem is, not to argument it... Problem is, if you look at the numbers, there are people who it's 180%. I mean, their water use, and I can read it because I got the numbers in here, their water use may be, you know, 20, 20, 20, 20 for the winter, and then it goes to 120, 120. So 80% doesn't begin to make the impact we want.
Except that they're probably overwatering their lawns, which is running off into the sewer system.
Well, they clearly are, but if we went to that, people's bills would go up. I think in general, our units that we bill for would go up. 80% of actual usage is bigger than the 671,000, my... Just off the top of my head. Doesn't mean it's wrong. I'm just saying that it doesn't solve the initial problem of the mowing and growing of the people watering. We're saying, "Look at my water bill because of all this..." Or my sewer bill because of all this water that I'm using to water the lawn.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I think I understand your position at the moment. One of my frustrations is, we've spent a year doing this. We knew it would take a year. We brought in a consultant, because this is very specialized. And I'm coming back to a recommendation that I made in February of '21, and it was a recommendation that was actually echoed in the DPW organization study, that we need a comprehensive water and sewer rate study, not one done in-house. We need to hire a consultant that specializes in this. Our system is not that complicated, but so much has changed in 12 years. And we're seeing it with our infrastructure that needs funding to fix it. Water, we had a water main break today. You know, we're issue... We have issues with just water capacity and how we're gonna pay for that if we do need to add additional storage. So I'm gonna make that recommendation again, that I do believe we should embark on a comprehensive water and sewer rate study.
How much do you think that would cost?
At the time, I had estimated at less than $20,000. And that was based on a larger community that had completed one in the prior three years.
With all the hours that Mark and Richard put towards it, that's probably $20,000 right there.
Well, the thing is, we've done that in the past. I mean, there's old ones from the town of Long... I'm not saying they're valid anymore. But we've done that in the past and always come up with the same options, you know? Because there is no... There is no perfect or specific answer. It's, "You could do this, or you could do this, or you could do this." And invariably, we've chosen to do one of those, which... Because every one of the potential answers has benefits and has detriments to it.
So then, well, I was just wondering if between the two of you, Mark, what's the rate of error? If there's, you know, a small amount, if there's so many people that get zeros, I mean, what are we talking about? 4% error? 10%? 50%?
No, it was higher. There's a lot of people that go away for... I mean, even if the system is without doing the averaging, there's a lot of errors that can go wrong with the system. Like, I even export to try to balance to make sure the water equaled the sewer unit. And like, just one little checkbox in someone's account can completely throw off that the sewer isn't looking at the water. So there's a lot that can go wrong. And so adding in the averaging, there's even more that can go wrong.
Tom, I'll throw out a number, 20%.
True. 20%.
I mean, it's that magnitude.
Yeah. Because, you know, we talked about... I know if we did, you know, this assessment you're asking for, they will come back and the state will say, "Well, we want you to get second meter." That's what they'll say. Because that's what they said before.
A second meter is abysmal, Tom.
I know it. But that's what they're gonna tell us. That's what they said that last time they came through, they said that. They said, "Say, get a second meter." And then, so we found... You said that... I heard you use the number 6, but how many... There were certain meters that just weren't working correctly, right?
No, I would say most of our meters are all working correctly. Every so often, we have a house that's like getting demolished or whatever, so we won't get a read on that one. And then we'll put in an estimate, and then we'll realize that's why we put in an estimate when we actually figure out what's going on with the house.
Okay.
So the meters do work. It's just...
The biggest problem I identified was, when a meter has to be changed out for some reason or another, you end up with a negative number. And we... I saw that when we did it manually. But manually, we always went in and made the adjustment to come up with our numbers. But automatically, you have, I don't know, a hand... It looks like a handful of meters every quarter that get replaced, right?
Yeah. Whether they break, and we put in a new... Either it's just this part of the meter that sends a signal, or it's the actual meter, and then you sometimes go back to zero. Sometimes we put in the new meter with the old read.
Okay. Cost aside, would monthly billing fix... Would do everything we want it to do? Doesn't sound like it. It'd get us closer?
It would get you to what his example wanted to do. I don't know if it's the best option. It would bog down staff as well, not only on, you know, the mailing of the bills, it's the actual processing. It's a good week of work.
Oh, okay. So a week out every month.
Yes, yes.
Another 5,000 bills come into the collector's office.
Yeah.
It's not somewhere you want to go.
Yeah.
No, I was just asking a question. So, you know, that there was a goal here, and we think that... This is a question for both of you. When we're saying we're fixing one problem and creating another, are we swapping out one for one? Are we fixing, like a lot of people are, we'll be getting more accurate bills, and then some people will not be?
We're fixing 904 problems, and we're probably creating 700.
So it's pretty even.
I wouldn't be voting for this if that was...
Okay.
I haven't talked to Lisa at all. I mean, I...
Josh, if I could make a suggestion, I wouldn't vote on this tonight. I think we need to know fairly soon if this is what you want to do, because the next bill will be going out. But I think this has been such a discussed topic over the last year, that I would recommend you wait a little bit and see what the public has to say after watching this.
Let's...
Mark, I was wondering if you could share, at least whatever you feel comfortable sharing on your cap.
I'll be glad. I got it all, sure. I'll be glad.
I just hope I can understand.
Like I said, just that's...
And I can send you the list of everything.
So if we're gonna change the cap, is that something that we could implement quickly?
That's easy in the system, Tom.
Okay.
Now, when we first started looking at this, we said, "Well, we have to get some consultants in to help us look at the billing and all this work." Are there any consultants that can solve the problem of, Mark? I mean, is it worth looking for a consultant that can solve this problem with the zeros?
Or do we already pay for a consultant?
We... The consultant is the one who's set up in the stimulation, and so he didn't have an answer for plugging in for the zeros.
So we'd have to find a better consultant, a different consultant.
Well, Tom, no, I think what was interesting is when, you know, back... This goes back a long... A year ago. So that when we were first told, "Oh, we can't do it," I went in, and Lynn, you sent me all the information on MUNIS. And I went through MUNIS and read through and said, "I think we can do it, I think we can do it." What I didn't realize then, which I don't know now, didn't know till now, was, MUNIS can only do it if you do monthly billing.
Because it's not getting the monthly...
With quarterly billing, it doesn't keep the monthly data. It just puts it down. So, you know, bad on me, but for not realizing the difference. But that's what our, you know, MUNIS expert told us, was that MUNIS can't do it at all. And like I said, we're changing one set of problems for, in my opinion, a bigger set of problems.
All right, so what do we do next? We need to look at the cap issue. We're not gonna vote tonight.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at the... And I'll be certainly glad to share this with everybody, what the cap does. I guess the only question I have for the board is that, do we feel compelled to move forward with, you know, a winter averaging that even Lisa said is kind of lousy, and has problems based on the limitations of MUNIS? Or do we go back and look at something else that, you know, again, instead of going where we have been, look, go back to the beginning. What were we trying to accomplish? And that was give some relief to people who rightfully said, "I'm paying for a service I'm not using because you're charging me sewer fees for water that's not going down the sewer." If we go back to that, you know, how can we best address that, in my opinion? And, you know, maybe consultant has a better answer for that. But in the short term, you know, I just... I just pick, you know, 40, 140, 68. But, you know, maybe there's a better number of 162 and a half. That's the right number of cap, whatever it is, and I'll be glad to look at that with Lisa or something.
Given from what we've discussed, and if anyone disagrees, let me know, I'd rather not do this because I don't want to unfairly treat the people at the low users. And it sounds like that's really what we're gonna do. It sounds like that's really what we're going to do. It's a lot easier to not water as much, which people shouldn't be doing as much anyway.
Well, but even if you, even if you meet the town's watering, you know, limitation, and, you know, washing your car, any water that you use that doesn't go down the sewer shouldn't be billed, legally shouldn't be, theoretically shouldn't be billed.
Yeah. We have to do the best we can.
So, right, we have to. And so what we're saying is, we've been doing this, this way for, Paul said, for as long as he can remember. Maybe that's no longer the best we can do. You know, we can't get it perfect because we don't have a perfect system. Perfect would be, you know, we go in every month and measure what goes down your sewer. We can't do that. Second perfect would be, we go in every month and measure what, you know, what your water usage is, you know, specifically that's going down your sewer. We can't do that either. So let's go to the third, or fourth, or fifth perfect, which may be, let's look at tweaking the, the cap. And, and to say to people, look, we, we heard you. We, we know that you're using water for irrigation that shouldn't be charged for sewer, and we're working, even if we say, look, this year, we're going to lower the limit from two twenty to one eighty and see where that is, and if that works well, next year, we can lower it to one six, whatever it is. And we don't have to hit it perfectly the first time, because there is no perfect answer, in my opinion.
Yeah. I think you're right, Mark. So I...
I mean, I'm, you know, the question is, when, when do we need to do this to send out our next quarterly?
So our next quarterly bill will be the July through September usage, so it won't go out till October.
And when you need to have a number from us to implement it?
Well, depending on what you're trying to implement. If it's just changing the two twenty, that simple can be done in one day. If it's actually implementing like an average, that would take longer.
I just, you know, if, if we have a sense that eighty percent of the, of it is accurate, you know, if we have that, because that's what you had said, maybe twenty percent is off, eighty percent. When you think about all of the, you know, all the research, you know, like clinical measures to measure, you name it, usually it's point eight oh. If it's, if it's eighty percent accurate, it's, it's legitimate for a clinical measure. And so it, it isn't like we're way off, like, oh my God, you know, eight oh, you know, who'd ever use that? Covid tests probably were eight oh, eight point oh, you know? All these tests that we do, our IQ tests, I mean, you name it. So eight oh isn't as bad as we think. You know, it's not perfection, but it sounds like...
Unless you're one of the twenty percent who's getting, who thinks they're getting overcharged, whether they're, or not.
You know, we can only hope that the computers will get smarter, as smart as us, right, Mark?
It's not, it's not that we're smarter, it's just that we sit there and can go through it line by line. You know, and the computers don't have that kind of logic to go through it. At least, this Munis system doesn't have the logic to go through it.
Well, we can put some requests into them and say, this is where you need to go in the future.
Lynn, have you talked to other, just town leaders in terms of the issues that we're having here, and just some ideas that they have, or?
In, in terms of our rate structure?
Yeah.
Not specifically. We looked for other communities that had implemented a winter averaging. There are not any in Massachusetts. The only example we found is an island in, off of the coast of Washington State, using Munis. We did a, this was an exhaustive process. So no, we haven't. The system that's here is, is different because it's recognizing irrigation much more than a lot of other communities outside of adding secondary meters.
Are there other systems that we can use? There's that.
Well, Munis is for, it's not just for water, it's everything. Our whole town municipal finance system is Munis, so, you know, and, and I think, you know, Paul knows better than any of us, but I don't know if you could, you'd want to break off your water and sewer system from Munis. I mean, that would be just a disaster.
Yeah. I wouldn't recommend it. Probably create a lot more hassle than it's worth.
I mean, like I said...
You could probably do it and download it somehow, but again, you'd be setting up all of this set of problems, right?
And Lynn, if it'll help, I'll publicly acknowledge that I thought we could do something which I now don't think we can do, and I apologize for what the towns had to go through to try to implement this. But it, it, it looked good on paper. That's all I can say. But it's clearly not, not practically implementable.
I'd be interested in seeing what a consultant would cost. I mean, this is something that's just been going on for years, since I've been in town, and we just haven't really gotten it right.
Anything else from the board?
I guess the only thing, Josh, so where are we going to go to, I mean, we can listen and solicit input, and I'm sure my inbox is probably already full of stuff from you.
Yeah, I'd like that, and I'd like to take a look at your cap work, and we can revisit at the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, I, I speak, I defer to you a lot on this, this kind of issue, because you've done the work on it, and people talk to you about it. So I'm very curious to hear what you hear.
Like I said, I, you know, I'm the first one who wanted the, you know, what, what Lisa came in here to promote, and after I read her document, I went, went nuts and spent some time doing all this other work, just to show that it's not that great. But I'm glad to hear you say that it was up to you, you probably wouldn't implement this either, so.
All right. Thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Very useful. Thanks. And next up, we have select board liaison assignments. We're filling in some gaps. Mark, do you want to run, I'm sorry, Mike, do you, do you want to run down the board?
I actually just pulled it up.
I'm sorry?
I actually just pulled it up.
Oh, great, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we had conversations about a month ago about, you know, once Steve left, and we still had some open vacancies from when Mark Strange was on the board. So the blank spots are currently not filled. And we also added two new commissions. We added the Housing Authority, which wasn't on there before, and we also added the DEI Advisory Committee, which is a newly formed committee that, you know, I voted on today. So I don't know, Josh, if you intended to just have a discussion on filling those open spots, or you guys just wanted to divvy them out?
Yeah, I think we should go, go down the list, and we can talk about who, when I joined last year, that's how we did it. We just went down and we'd get a volunteer or a little discussion if we needed. So with this twelve open, open spots, I think everyone should just take, three won't do it, actually.
I don't see Mr. Zwirko sitting down here at all. And we take those twelve open spots and each take three, somebody's coming off.
As I was talking, as I was saying, I said, wait, that's not right. So each of us probably has four or so on there already.
Yeah, four or five. I got the only way of, I have to get one more. To be, then we'd all have five.
How many do we have here total, Mike?
Give me one second, I free that up.
You know, by the way, the school building committee will, oh, it's on there, so that's going to have to, it's going to be a big one.
Yeah.
You said it's a school committee, but we need to put in school building committee.
So twenty-eight would be twenty-nine, including the school building committee, which was, we're going to be discussing tonight as well.
I, I would think so.
I don't think so.
MSBA under...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is on there. All right.
What's MMA?
Mass Municipal Association. Tom had, Tom had been on that, just a liaison.
Oh, like the Select Board Association?
Yeah, MSA, you're right.
Okay.
All right. So there's twenty-eight, so that would be seven each.
Actually, that MSBA is, that's the Select Board Association. Yeah. That's not the school, but that's, yeah.
All right.
And I don't even know if those are the right acronyms for the Select Board Association, but...
It's actually called MSA, not MSBA.
Okay. So all that, that, this is just a list that was already created.
Well, Dan, is there any that caught your eye, first of all?
Wow, I thought I'd just, you know, get all the remaining ones here, but...
Close. Good. Well, I...
Yeah, the Parks and Rec is something I, I have a lot of passion in, that I would, I would like to be more involved with.
Now, Mike, you can't do it on this one?
I'm just updating it on my notes.
Ah, you can put me on the DEI. Anything else, Dan? Are you going to default?
The Energy and Sustainability. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, please.
MMA. Tree Committee.
And, Mike, also, Tom, you got any that caught your eye?
Housing Authority, you put me down for that. And I guess, Register of Voters, I'll do that.
If somebody, if somebody else wants to take on this tax ceiling task force, I'm more than willing to switch that, because this has just been driving me nuts.
School Building. Thank you.
What is going on with the task force now?
Not much, that's...
Yeah. I'll, I'll take that over.
Okay.
Mark, was there something else you wanted to hop onto?
So we just actually confirmed, sorry to interrupt, that there's two additional, so it's the Mass School, School Building Association, and then we're also going to have to add Scantic Valley, which I didn't see that on here.
I'll do Scantic Valley.
So there's thirty in total.
Okay.
Conservation Commission.
Yeah, that's open.
Why don't you do CPC as well, Dan?
All right.
Kind of ties in. Mike, I can also do the ZBA.
Okay. I mean, this, this doesn't mean we have to attend every one of these meetings, it's just be available, read the minutes and follow up. I think attending all these meetings gets, get very problematic for some of us.
Yeah, Dan, so what we, what I did last year, reach out to the chairs, try to attend a meeting if I can, and otherwise, just keep up on it, be available.
Yeah.
What else do we have open?
School Committee. And Capital Planning.
Yeah, I was going to say, School Committee, I'm already, we've been in contact already on a couple of issues.
And what did I just say? Capital.
I guess I'll do capital, wait. Community Preservation and then Conservation?
Yep, I got, I have those.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were filling it out.
Yeah, he's going, that's going to be blank. So is that everything, Mike?
Yep, just the Capital Planning.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Dan, okay. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks.
That one's fun. You get to spend money on that one.
Yeah, if that gets too much, let me know. Because I've done Capital Planning now, I can, I'd like you to start on.
No problem.
You could, I could take Conservation Commission.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, good. I'd take Tree Committee, I guess, is that open?
Yeah, I took that one as well. Actually, it's about, it's, it's pretty even right now, at this point.
All right. All right, I think that's it. We're good, Mike?
Yep, we're good.
Great. Moving on to new business. The Massachusetts School Building Authority update. First up is the Glenbrook Middle School Initial Compliance Certification document. Lynn, you want to explain this?
Yes, and the superintendent is coming in to join us. I expect him any minute. So we have been meeting about this. Our eligibility period opened August first. It's open for two hundred and seventy days, so that brings us to April twenty-third. This is the very first deliverable in that process, the Initial Compliance Certification. It needs to be signed by the Chief Executive Officer, who is the, who happens to be the Chair of the Select Board. And that document is here for you tonight. And then I can go, we can have the full conversation before you discuss this, if you, the internet, we can have a full conversation on the entire topic before you vote on the compliance certification, which probably makes more sense to me.
Yeah, please do that.
Great. Great. So Dr. O'Shea is here. Marty, I was just talking about the...
You don't get to sit there. Nice try.
Stay at the table.
I was just explaining that we, our eligibility phase just opened, two hundred and seventy days, brings us to April twenty-third. This is our first deliverable, and we will talk about the entire project before they actually vote on this. So if you want to kick it off from there, you're welcome to.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so as, as Lynn explained, the eligibility period commenced August first, even though it was back in March that we heard from the MSBA that our, one of our statements of interest was approved. And so it's been a long time coming, and it feels good to have finally gotten the full attention of the MSBA and have the opportunity to address the, the really pressing needs of the two middle schools. And so there's a, during this eligibility period, there's a series of deliverables that we're responsible for. The first is the Initial Compliance Certification, which is part of your agenda tonight. Essentially, this is MSBA boilerplate language. It demonstrates your sign-off, would demonstrate our commitment to abide by all the statutes associated with building in partnership with the MSBA, and all the regulatory requirements associated with building with the MSBA. I did, for what it's worth, I did run it by our, our consul, our attorney for the schools, and they had no problem with it.
What if they did?
Right. The truth is, we would, we wouldn't have an opportunity to amend the language. It's, this is, this is their language, and it's not up for edits, or amendments, or changes. You can only vote it up or vote it down. So that's the first, it's really the first deliverable, and there's a series of other projects that we have to take care of in this two hundred and seventy-day eligibility period. You know, to anybody that's watching at home, I, I've always characterized this as a series of, of red lights and green lights that we pass through, and there's opportunities all along the way for us as a community, or for the MSBA, to advance the process, or, or slow down the process, or stop the process. And so I, I think that's one of the reassuring things about this process, is that there's a number of checkpoints, a number of milestones that we have to work in cooperation with the Select Board on, and work in cooperation with the MSBA on. So I'll stop there. So that first deliverable, as Lynn explained, is that ICC document that I believe was in your packet.
Go ahead, Mark.
Dr. O'Shea, I got a question, and it's not this document. You know, I, I see what this document is, and it's a, like you said, vote up or down. I guess the question I have is this process, which is, where in the process is the, what we keep hearing in town is, well, we haven't really decided if it's one school or two schools, or if we're fully renovating, or if we're replacing. Where does that get done? Is that after we do the feasibility study? And does this document, this, this compliance, you know, does this have anything to do with the process by which that is done?
I'd say the, the compliance certificate is more of a global document that encompasses the entire project from beginning to end, the entire duration of the project. In answer to your question, that, that question is answered as part of the feasibility study. So if we were to reach a feasibility study agreement with the MSBA, we would have an opportunity to identify critical questions with them. And, and it's from there that you sort of let the facts guide the conclusion. It does seem, you know, our, our initial pass-throughs on this point, obviously, towards two buildings that are at the end of their useful life. And when we conducted a facility assessment earlier this year with the School Committee, it suggested that it would be more cost-effective and likely more educationally effective to consider combining into a single setting to construct a new, single middle school. But that, the, the firm answer to that, the real answer to that, has to be answered by that feasibility study. And that's, that, as you know, it's, it's a very extensive study that studies everything from site conditions to traffic conditions, to your educational profile, your, your enrollment and demographic projections, so there's a number of factors that go into that, that help you answer that question. But, you know, what we get to do as part of that feasibility study is say that we would like to take a hard look at the prospect of, of combining our middle schools, given that we have two facilities that are at the end of their life, and given frankly, the, the enrollment... And given frankly, the enrollment patterns that we've seen. We have two middle schools that are certainly on the small side when you compare them to other middle schools across the states. We have about 330 students in each of our two middle schools. And so there's, sometimes there's some programming limitations that come along with that when you have, when you have middle schools of that size. It makes it difficult to achieve the programming and the extracurricular scale that you need to offer as much as you want kids. So it's really the feasibility study that helps us answer that question. At the end of this eligibility period, we would hopefully be in a position to reach an agreement with the MSBA that would allow us to proceed with that, with the feasibility study. So this is, this is just the first stage that we have to pass through.
Is there any scenario that other communities have entered, have had, where what the community concluded wasn't compatible with what the MSBA was looking to do? Or is it, you know, we'll get there, we just need to dot the i's and cross the t's?
Certainly, there have been communities that have passed through the feasibility study, and there's been failed votes for the...
That's a difference.
Right. So, but normally, you're, Mark, you're working alongside the MSBA. I mean, they've invested time and resources and personnel into this, and they want to come up with, they want to work with communities to come up with a solution that makes sense for the local community, that's cost-effective, that's educationally effective. So at this stage, at the feasibility stage, I'm not aware of communities that kind of had hit a breaking point with the MSBA. It usually just comes down to that, it's at that point where you're looking for funding for the entire project.
Have you gone through one of these processes?
I have. I had an opportunity in the district where I worked previously to take a project basically from beginning to end. I worked as principal at the design stage, and then as superintendent during the local, the feasibility and local funding stage, and then ultimately the construction phase, so.
Okay. Tom?
I just wanna say that I'm very encouraged to hear that you're talking about combining both schools, which would mean you'd have a building with two schools in it, as far as I can saw. My only expert in this area is my son Nicholas, who was a graduate of this high school and was a scholar athlete. And he said, "No, you gotta have two middle schools. You can't have one middle school." He says, "You can't have a kid get labeled in middle school and have to live with that all through high school." He says, you know, "Having two schools really frees up children in a positive way." So I'm glad to hear that other people are on that track. And the only thing is, number 30 here says that the district acknowledges and agrees, it shows duly appropriate and authorized the full amount of funding, the feasibility study. And how are we gonna be able to afford that?
That's where I would say, I defer to, I defer to your experts on that question. But it is important that the town be prepared to fund the full feasibility study. Ultimately, it is subject to reimbursement, as I understand it.
Oh, and it gets, it's only just, they put the money upfront, but you'd be reimbursed. Oh, okay, that's good news.
Lynn, Paul, I know you have that in the memo.
Yes. Segue.
Paul, give us a... Tell us the good news.
Hey, we, we had sat down Superintendent, School Business Manager, Lynn and myself a while ago, and looked at a number of projects that have been, gone through the feasibility phase over the last number of years in Massachusetts. More, you know, concentrating on ones that were comparable to the Town of Long Meadow. And we've estimated that it probably is gonna cost about $1.6 million, give or take, to get this feasibility study and all the things that are needed to go along with it. So right now is the best number that we probably have. As time goes on, this will go through a bidding process. But you know, right now, that's kind of our estimate where we are. The affordability, again, there's a recommendation in there that's, you know, just a recommendation, it's gonna be up to you folks once the warrant is set on how to fund that. But we will have to come up with a full 1.6 upfront.
And we would bond that, or...
The recommendation that is put forward for financing it is we will have a hefty free cash number, once it is certified, mid-September. And the recommendation is to fund about half of this project with our reserves, free cash, and the other half coming out of the bonding. So we would put everything upfront, and then with the bonding, we would probably just roll over bond anticipation notes and retire a portion of them every year, looking at the impact on the operation, operational budget, to see how much we could actually retire annually. With the bond anticipation notes, we could go out as long as 10 years. But I would want to probably retire those even prior to us going out. You know, should we go forward with a bigger project, I would probably wanna see those off of our record. So I'd wanna retire those at maybe four or five years.
All right. And we went through this not that long ago with the high school.
Correct.
And did it affect the municipal budget much when we did that? Those many years ago?
No, not really, because when we had gone through with the high school, it was done as a debt exclusion. So everything that we had for debt service was, again, passed directly on to the taxpayers, and we were able to raise that much more money annually through the tax levy in order to pay for it. So it really had no, had no impact, as far as that was concerned, on the operational budget. Because again, it was voted to exclude it from the Proposition 2 and 1/2 limitations.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else? No, okay, so we need a motion to sign the Initial Compliance Certification?
So moved, I'll move that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you.
Has the School Committee voted on this?
School Committee approved it at its most recent meeting.
So the next update related to this is the formation of a School Building Committee. So that deliverable is due the end of September, which really isn't much time, given that the recommended structure is two members be appointed by the School Committee, and two members be appointed by the Select Board. Given the schedules of those, of both those bodies, we do need to move forward that relatively quickly. It's already gone to the School Committee. I don't know if you wanna talk about the formation of the group.
Sure, yeah, the MSBA and the correspondence they sent us to kick off the eligibility period, they provide a template for a roster for the School Building Committee. And so there are certain positions that are designated and need to be represented, and then there are sort of some at-large positions. The School Committee, the recommendation that we brought to the School Committee and that Lynn and I talked about was to have a School Building Committee that would consist of nine voting members and several non-voting members. The non-voting members would be school and town employees, school principal, business official, Mr. Visserzick, or the, whoever would be the, representing the Finance Department. So those would be non-voting members, but there would be nine voting members. And so as Lynn explained, the recommendation is that two of those non-voting, or excuse me, two of those voting positions be appointed by the Select Board, and two of the voting positions be appointed by the School Committee. These are sort of at-large positions. The regulations of the MSBA say that the membership, these at-large positions, need to be filled by folks who are knowledgeable in architecture, engineering, and construction. That's one sort of category. And then the other category for the at-large positions is individuals familiar with the district's educational mission and school facilities. So the thought is that the School Committee could interview and appoint at-large, the at-large positions that are responsible for, or have a background in educational mission, and that the Select Board could interview and appoint individuals who have a background in engineering, construction, and architecture. If that makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense.
Just a... Go ahead, Mark.
I was just trying to make a comment that, you know, my initial thought is that we have some people in town who have the experience of having gone through the School Building Committee for this school. And, you know, it's always better to learn from your prior mistakes than learn over again. And I think we, the Select Board at least ought to take a look at, I don't even know if those people are willing to serve, but certainly look at some of those people as potential because they learned an awful lot going through that process. I know at the end, I sat in on a bunch of the meetings, and there was a lot of learning that went on in that, I don't know, 18-month or two-year process. So my recommendation is, instead of pulling numbers out, names out of the air, see if we can find some people with experience. And maybe the School Committee's gonna do the same thing, I don't know. But that's my recommendation to the Select Board, because I'll tell you, there's some people who did a phenomenal job on the High School Building Committee.
Yeah, I can't speak for the School Committee, but I agree with you, Mark. I think, in the process as it's unfolding in front of us now, it doesn't seem that it's changed to any great extent since this community went through it with Long Meadow High School. So it's a, it's an established, well-oiled process at this point.
But there, I mean, you know, we talked about forming a School Building Committee, but there are, I don't know if they're statutory or whatever positions that you can't fill until we know, you know, who the OPM is and who the architect is, and, right, there's all those statutory people on it. I mean, we can put together these four folks, but that's a long way from forming the School Building Committee.
Yeah, in addition to the four that we talked about that would be subject to the appointment of the, potentially subject to the appointment by School Committee and Select Board, there are non-voting members that we've already sort of designated and slotted for participation on the School Building Committee. The Select Board needs to be represented, and tell me if I'm saying this correctly, Lynn, as the, sort of the chief executive, representing the Chief Executive Officer of the town. School Committee has to be represented. There needs to be someone on the board, on the School Building Committee, who is certified in purchasing, and so that, that position needs to be, is clear and designated as well. So I think really that what Lynn and I need at this stage from the Select Board and the School Committee is to, is to see if it makes sense to have the Select Board responsible for two of the at-large positions, and the School Committee responsible for two of the at-large positions, but also identify members of your board, a member of your board and members of the School Committee to serve on the School Building Committee. It's a significant, it's a significant committee. And I would anticipate that in the 20, in this school year at least, it won't be too intensive. But as we, if we were to get into a design and construction phase, it would be more of a heavy lift, perhaps as many as two meetings a month, I'm guessing.
And, you know, just go down a hall here and look at the plaque. There's a, it says, "A lot of turnover, a lot of people coming on," you know, because it was a long period of time, and it's a massive...
Yeah. The hope is that, you know, you make a reasonable effort to maintain consistency over the duration of the project, but we know that that's difficult.
I don't know, you know, is that, you know, I've got no problem agreeing in concept to it. I don't know that I'm prepared to name, name names to it.
Right, yeah.
I see you raising your hand.
I've talked with Nicole about this, the Chair of the School Committee, and I think that that is exactly, that makes a lot of sense to me, to have the two appointed positions parceled out like that, especially given the people we have contact with in town. So I think that's certainly the way to go. But we, and we'll do some digging and think about it for our next meeting.
So what we would do, if you're comfortable with this, we would put out a call for residents as early as tomorrow, because we have to meet those certain deadlines. So we would ask for interested people to submit applications by the end of August, and then you would have interviews September 6th, with an appointment on September 19th, so we can meet that next deadline with MSBA.
Yeah. I think that sounds great.
That's excellent, yeah. And the schedule that Lynn described for the Select Board is almost identical to the process that the School Committee would follow. We would issue, probably in conjunction, we could issue an application. We'll put out a press release, we'll push it out in whatever communication channels we have, just to make sure that everybody's aware of the opportunity, and let folks apply, and then the prospective, your board and the committee would interview to make informed decisions on that.
Go ahead, Marty. I just wanna make a comment to the Select Board, and that's my perception and my observation, I guess, from the last meeting, School Building Committee, is that School Building Committee has scads of authority and autonomy. And, you know, tonight we had interviews for positions on boards, and, you know, we often make light of, we come in here and take your pulse. If you got a pulse, we appoint you to the committee. I would strongly urge the Select Board not to use that process for the School Building Committee. We need a very strong School Building Committee of people who are knowledgeable, committed, and, you know, maybe people who go beyond some of the other things, because the dynamics of the School Building Committee, the dynamics of what they have the authority to do is overwhelming. And I think it's very, very important that, you know, not just we get the right two people, but they're, because there are only two of nine people. But School Committee, get the right people also. And I just fear that we're gonna, you know, like Lynn said, we'll put out a call and get, pardon my expression, the usual volunteers. And that may not be what we wanna do this time, and I hate to say that. But, you know, we wanna make sure we've got really, really competent people to do this. And I, like I said, I'm gonna go recruit people who are on the other School Building Committee, because I saw what they did firsthand, and they worked like crazy, but they did a lot of good work.
From start to finish, how long was the tenure?
I don't know, two years, two and a half years?
Well, again, you're starting with the feasibility study. By the time you put a shovel in the ground, it's gonna be a couple of years. You're, I think it's gonna be closer to four years, probably.
Four years from what?
From the time you have this appointment to the, you know, the time to do a ribbon cutting.
Oh, yeah, at least, yeah. I mean, I think it could be...
Probably a bit longer.
Even more than that. The feasibility itself, the study itself, I mean, they, that takes, you know, over a year just to, you have to hire the consultants, you have to develop a scope for the feasibility study, and then put it out to bid. That study needs to be completed. So that in itself is a, probably, pushes up against two years, probably.
As a corollary to all that, I hope that qualified, we got a lot of qualified people in town, a lot of smart people in town. I hope we get some passionate people who apply and will volunteer. It's a big task, but it's, education is what our town's all about, and this is one of the most important things we can do. So I hope we get some, form a really strong and great committee.
Yeah.
And I think that the last, the folks who are on the School Committee made a lot of ground. I mean, they really solved the problem with the swimming pool, because originally they didn't wanna have that part of the plan, and then redecorating, you know, and other high school models were set on what we did here. And so it's an opportunity for people who are really interested in moving education forward to be on something like this, because middle schools are one of the biggest challenges of education, I believe.
All right. Anybody else?
So just to, so it's really clear regarding the financing. The memo that was drafted and in your packet, if you're comfortable with what we're recommending in there, our draft warrant article that we are preparing for the Fall Town Meeting will reflect the recommendation. We could talk about it either the September 6th meeting or September 19th, when we bring that warrant to you. But that, just so you're aware, is looking, we're looking to move this forward October 25th for Fall Town Meeting.
I mean, the other thing I was recommending, that also goes to Bond Council and to the MSBA for approval too. So there's, you know, there's no question about it. That we'll have multiple sources to fund that feasibility study, so.
And this is getting reimbursed?
Not for a long time.
Eventually.
Eventually, hopefully.
It's not 100% reimbursement.
So I don't know if the question is to Paul or Lynn, but the recommendation is about half come from free cash. When are we gonna get our free cash number?
Free cash will not be certified until mid to late September? So it'll be before you have to close the warrant?
Okay. Let's put it that way. I mean, for fall, you've always hit the number pretty much on the head. But if free cash came in some reason lower than this, we may wanna change our tune a little bit.
Right, right.
We have to, yeah.
Again, I think the warrant closes on your second meeting in September, and then the final one is is like October sixth, the third, precash should be certified in between that window.
Okay, great. That's kind of important. Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Marty.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your support and time.
Select board and town manager fiscal year 2023 goal setting. Lynn, go ahead.
Thank you. So I have not spent a lot of time yet adding any more goals in for FY23, partly because I wanted to have this conversation with you all, but also we're still really in the midst of wrapping up a lot of the FY22 goals. So you'll see that reflected here. Mike put a lot of work into this sheet to color code it for you. We have a lot of stuff, a lot of great projects that are underway and getting close to wrapping up, but we're not there yet. So we definitely have some room to add some more FY23 goals in, but I really just wanted to start an initial conversation tonight.
Go ahead, Mark.
It sounds to me like after our last conversation, somewhere out here ought to be middle schools. And even though it's it's bulk of it is the, you know, the school building committee, Lynn, you and your office are gonna have a lot to to do with that, whether it's chat or purchasing or whatever it is. So I think that somewhere, and I and I don't know the the right benchmark for that. It's probably, you know, achieve of, you know, a feasibility study or complete the feasibility study and whatever it is, but there's something like that I think needs to be on here. So that's one of the additions I'd have. I personally, I also, you know, have have every year said we ought to be looking at the for the Parks and Rec Department for a dog park, but it never seems to make the cut because nobody wants to do it. Throw that out. And and just so people in town on the select board know, the problem is not that I think or we need a dog park, but if you talk to the people who live along Bliss Road, who have a de facto un, you know, unlisted, you know, dog park in their backyard, they they'd like us to do something more more formal about it. I mean, you know, people go into into Bliss Park and then, you know, where they drive in and it's it's wild back there. And I think we ought to do something, whether it's a formal dog park or just formalize that. And that's the reason I put that on the list.
Okay. I just had one question, Lynn. When it talks about the installation of the EV chargers, and we got that letter from some folks who said that the chargers don't seem to be high enough power or something. Do we have, do we have options when we were getting these chargers to get like higher powered?
Yeah, there's three level, three levels of chargers. Level one, which is just a plug in at your house. Level two, which is what we're deploying, and level three, which are much quicker chargers. They're much more expensive. So we we do not pursue level three at this point. We we don't have the funds to do that.
Tom, besides that, at at least at the DP, well, I don't know about the DPW, but at the adult center, we don't have the voltage coming in for those. Those chargers run at very, very high voltages. I think the ones we have are running, what, two twenty?
Two twenty, yeah.
You know, and this is far above four forty volts that they run those things at. So.
Four forty, okay.
You know, I think above that even. So that that's part of the issue. I mean, I I I read the letter also, but, you know, the 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 argument was, you know, we're charging too much or whatever it is. I mean, I think we took a very careful look at, we're charging what it's costing us for just the charging cost. So they're saying, well, we're charging too much. They're actually gonna get what they pay for in terms of 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 volts or amps or whatever the heck they they're buying. I I, you know, I I read the same letter you did, but the answer is we didn't do a good enough job explaining to them what the what these chargers are and what they're gonna get for it. In terms of the time, you know, it 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 is what it is. I mean, yeah, we're, you know, instead of saying, like I said, you know, the ad on TV is buy an electric car, charge it for eighteen minutes for eight bucks. So ours is gonna take an hour, but we're still gonna charge you the same eight bucks. I I just, I didn't get a chance to answer that that letter, but I think they didn't understand what we were doing. So.
Yeah. So as far as getting any of those level three chargers, that, you know, we won't know until.
So we were looking at a location on Long Meadow Street for that. I have paused that for the moment because I want to see what happens with the level two chargers because I I have a concern that the rate that we've assessed for that is so much higher than the rest of the region that they're not going to be used. And we're going to be paying for them anyway, whether people are using them or not. As Corinne pointed out, it costs us less money if more people use them. And so I I want to wait because the level threes are so much more expensive. I don't want those to sit idle.
Yeah, it sounds like level threes would be appropriate on Route five because.
That is a location that we would get for them, yes.
Use them and then get back right on the highway.
Since we're talking about it, the letter I found was, I wish I had known that one hour would get you twenty miles. It seems like.
Depends on the car.
Yeah, well, I I don't know what the use case is at this point. If if you're really, if it's eight bucks, you get twenty miles, why would anyone use that?
I I don't believe they're correct. I don't think eight, based on what Corinne gave us for for the amount of kilowatt hours that are gonna go in there, if they're only getting eight eight miles or twenty miles on that, they got a problem with their electric vehicle. I mean, Lynn, you know, Corinne gave us the numbers. Here's how many kilowatt hours you're gonna get in there. You know, that's how many kilowatt hours they're gonna go in there. That's not what the letter seemed to indicate, that they understood that that's how many kilowatt hours they were gonna get in their car for the for the for the hour that we did it. I mean, we gotta go back and look, but I I think there was a, from where my reading is, Josh, there was a big disconnect.
Well, yeah, I agree with that, but I would like to know where the disconnect is and if I if, who's wrong or if there's some somewhere in the middle, but it might be something to reassess.
The the problem is, what are you gonna do? Charge charge fifty cents for something that's costing us eight bucks?
No, I I think there's a middle ground there, too.
Yeah, so a lot of communities are doing that. They're subsidizing it. It's it is a commitment that they're making toward green energy solutions and getting cars off, getting carbon polluting cars off the road. That is what a lot of communities are doing.
I would love to do that. It's just our town's on a position to take a bath on it, unfortunately, yeah. But I but I also don't want us to lose money by them not being used.
And frankly, Josh, that's one of the reasons when I, I was the one who suggested to Lynn the site on Long Meadow Street, my my suggestion was we leased the land to somebody who wants to do it as a private enterprise, that the town not go into the business of putting in chargers. We just leased the land to somebody who wants to take advantage of the traffic on Interstate ninety-one. We don't lose because they'll pay us something for the lease. I don't know if they're gonna pay us five dollars a month or five thousand dollars a month or something more than that, but then they figure out what they gotta build and what they gotta, they gotta price it.
At least it's a positive for us.
And for us, it's just the, we're leasing the land.
Yeah.
You know, because you're right. It becomes a, you know, you, what you'd like to do, the town can't afford to do. And and you and I both get letters from people, why are we subsidizing people with electric vehicles in town? And from, you know, why is my tax, tax payment, payment paying for somebody else to charge their electric car?
And if I, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but a lot of the services that municipal government offers are subsidized. The pools are a great example. Taxpayers pay for that and many of them don't use those pools.
But everybody has the opportunity to take advantage of the pool. Not everybody has the opportunity to to charge their their car.
Yeah, and it's a chicken and an egg. And I I see it from both both sides. If you have more EV charging stations available, it gives, it signals to people that this is a viable transportation means, maybe I should look at an electric vehicle. So it's, I can see it from both angles, absolutely. And I think I'm leaning more heavily on the climate-friendly angle, just based on everything that we're all grappling with right now.
And I agree with what Josh was saying, right? So it's a double-edged sword. So we want people to use them, but quite frankly, eight dollars, that's pretty expensive, I think, and gonna deter people from using them. But also the location of where these are placed, and that's what I asked last time to you, Lynn, I think. So it's DPW and it's at the adult center. Personally, if we could go back, which we can't, but we can go forward and we can look at some other options where, what about the Long Meadow shops? I understand we don't own that land, but we could work with them. Or the tennis courts, other locations that are gonna bring, are more appealing and more people use them than at the DPW that doesn't even have an electric vehicle right now, or the senior center, I don't know how many people are gonna use them over there. So based on the letter, I would agree with the Zimmers that suggested maybe we have a working group or a committee to evaluate this in the future. I would support that.
Yeah, so this was brought to the Energy Sustainability Committee. I mean, that's a, that's a perfect group to to talk about this. We did, I did bring them the locations. This was back in winter of twenty. And we had a conversation about it. They were working on doing some outreach to the businesses. There was a business program at the time that had a very short turnaround time. So I don't believe Energy Sustainability did get that outreach to the shops or any of the other commercial establishments. But that is a great, a great resource to use.
So who who could we talk to at the shops, for example? Just, you go to West Hartford, you go to other towns that are, you know, somewhat similar, and there's EV stations all over the place. It's attracting people to want to go there, park, charge, go into a restaurant. I feel like that would be a really popular area. And we could get away with having a a lower dollar amount per charge.
Question, Dan, is if you go to those places, who owns the chargers and what level charger are they?
Well, I'm I'm not, I don't have all the answers to you.
Right, 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 right. But but to say, you know, before we go and say we need to be like, you know, West Hartford.
Well, it's just an example.
Right, but we need to understand, you know, those could be privately owned by somebody who else who invested in them and they have level three chart. I don't know what they are, you know, so you you can't compare apples to.
But I think, but we can compare to what we have, what we've already installed. So we've installed these stations that are now eight dollars at the DPW. I would almost guarantee we're not gonna see a lot of people coming and going, charging their vehicle there or at the adult center. We made that commitment, so six months from now, let's take a look at it and and see how much, you know, are are people charging there or what's the, what's the revenue? Is it, you know, these are all things we should be looking into.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about doing. We're definitely gonna revisit. And I think it would be, I would like to hear from people here and talk about their real use cases. I don't have an electric car, so I don't, I don't know. And I would like to know from other, hear from other people if they're getting more than twenty miles for the eight dollars. We just need to know the real world implications. Back to the topic at hand. The pilot agreement, do we, I know I bring this up every year or all the time. If, will BayPath agree to that? Or is it just a matter of getting, sitting down with the right person and talking about it?
We have a pilot agreement. It's expired.
Okay.
It expired, I think, the year that I got here.
Okay.
And so we started some initial conversations internally about it, and then COVID hit. It all got pushed to the side. It was meant to be renewed when we brought the new finance director in, but that did not actually happen. And so that's why no movement's been had on it. We are still getting a payment under the old agreement.
Oh, we are? Oh, all right. I didn't realize that. Okay.
What is the pilot agreement?
Oh, payment in lieu of taxes.
With with BayPath?
Yeah. So BayPath does not have to pay us taxes, but we have an agreement. They pay us probably not what they, the lands actually were.
It's 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 got to do with the the houses that they purchased for classrooms.
Security across the street.
Or there's classrooms, there's.
By Emerson?
There's all, they're all over the place. But there were classrooms, they were for residents, they were for faculty. But there, I'll call it BayPath campus, is nothing has to do with any of that stuff. But there's also, there's also an agreement that they had in place to pay us a certain amount of money toward our, and and some of it was voluntary toward our EMS services, which they use, whether it's the fire department. So but it was, it was, if I remember correctly, it was very specific, having to do with specific houses and a specific amount for those houses, having nothing in. It's not like the great Harvard University, we're gonna pay you so much money because we're in Cambridge and we use Cambridge. But it it was, it was equitable, it was agreed upon, and it was something that worked and that's something we do want to continue to have and see if we can extend. And the fact that they're, they continue to honor that agreement is is great news, I think. So. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
It's it's really got to do with when they started buying a houses around town.
So Josh, if I may, so for for this document, this is just a snippet. We have a larger scale document that has, you know, significant, oh, excuse me, different pages for each goal to kind of show.
Oh, we've seen that before, yeah.
So this is just a snippet of it for the public document. And what we've done in the past is we've gave, given quarterly updates on the goals. So what if we determine any new goals, we can update that sheet and then we could present it again sometime in the winter or so.
Anything else to add at the, this time?
No.
Okay.
I think we had a lot of good progress.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Permanent Town Building Committee discussion. And we've attached the charge. All right, so I think this has come about, there's been some questions about the role of the permanent town building committee and going forward. And I think we decided we wanted to revisit this charge and perhaps make some tweaks and also talk about the makeup of the Permanent Town Building Committee. Go ahead, Mark.
So when when you mentioned that this was coming up and, you know, I talked a little bit about this, one of the things that concerns me that we need to address now that we didn't, and the reason we didn't address it is because we focused the town building committee on building new buildings, which was the DPW and the adult center. Now that that's done and they're going into the other areas, which is, you know, future needs of buildings, review and comment on current capital projects, it becomes obvious that the relationship between the building committee, the capital planning committee, the DPW maintenance and and buildings maintenance group all needs to be well-specified, is I think the best way to put it, because we've gotten to the point where there's, we've got people, pardon me, but, you know, sometimes at odds, but sometimes at, you know, tripping all over each other with with things. And and I can think of nothing more perfect example than than the than Center School with the roof versus the windows and the facade and the, and and that kind of stuff and and where we go with that. And so I I really support us taking a a look at what the charter is for the building, permanent building committee at a time when we're not building committees, when we're not building buildings. And I think we need to take that third paragraph and and figure it out a little bit better. And I don't know, Lynn, if, where you, where you're coming from, but to me, that's the issue. I think they did a phenomenal job in terms of doing what we needed to do for the DPW meeting, what that we needed to do for the adult center. But now we've got to help them to be effective and efficient and and not, you know, not fall all over some of these other groups we have, which could be capital planning, community preservation, and certainly the DPW maintenance team. Is that?
Absolutely agree.
So.
I also have my notes that we may want to include that we have an HVAC professional as one of the members. I don't know if we want to, need to specify that specifically or if that would fall under civil mechanical.
Good luck, good luck trying to find him. We're lucky. We've got Tom on there who's a roofing guy. He's done a tremendous job. But I I think the the key is, and I don't know who, but somebody rewriting that third paragraph. So we better specify, maybe it's the whole thing, but specifying those relationships better. And I and I don't know who to do it, but, you know, I keep looking at Lynn.
We can take a crack at it if you'd like. I do think there'd be, clarifying some of this would be a welcome thing to happen. There are some points where it gets a little bit. bit confusing internally. So, I, I think this would be helpful. It's a, a great group that has provided a ton of guidance and insight on things. But sometimes that line gets blurred, and I think we all benefit from it being a little bit sharper.
I love editing things, but you're the one that gets caught up in the middle of it. So, if you, to be able to take a crack at it, you can see it with the, the larger view. That'd be welcome.
So, so Josh, one of the, one of the issues that we had was, you know, like I said, this relationship between the, the community preservation, capital planning, school building committee. If I recall, our charter review committee, not charter commission, but charter review committee, had a bunch of recommendations about the community preservation, no, capital planning process that did not get addressed the last time. In fact, we have a whole bunch of things. I remember Dave Martell had sent me a note saying we still had a bunch of things that we didn't talk about. And I think, you know, we ought, not that we want it in the charter, but we ought to take a look and see as we rewrite what the permanent building committee does, look at that relative to what the charter review committee suggested in terms of that capital planning process. You know, and I'm not talking about, you know, whether we're, when we're buying the, you know, fire engine or something like that. It's, it's capital planning for, you know, rebuilding the balustrade at the, at the community house or something, you know? That's really building-related stuff that never gets to go through the building committee, goes right to the capital planning committee, and then the building committee says, "Yeah, but nobody asked us, and here's what..." You know? I mean, so, what I'm saying is, I think there's an opportunity to not only rewrite this, but take a look at what some of the recommendations were from the, from the Charter Review Group that will also streamline at least that part of capital planning. And so, we come in here and we don't have, pardon me, but, you know, capital planning sitting here and community preservation there, and the permanent building committee sitting there, and they're telling us three different stories. They gotta come in with, you know, because they got, they got the, the proposal in three different areas, three different times, three different directions, with three different sets of data.
Mike, can you dig up those recommendations for us?
Yep.
And I can get, I can get them too, Mike, if you need. But anyway, that's, that would be my thing. That would kinda close the entire loop on this.
I'm sus, I'm surprised we didn't do those, because I really made a point to...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you remember them, though, right?
Every one. Well, I brought, everything that needs to be voted on, I brought to the board.
No, they're...
There was only one left when I, when I was drawn.
No, there, there are a couple. I'll, I'll share them with you, Tom. Somehow they got dropped between the bed and the wall. I don't know how.
They must have.
Well, yeah, if that's gonna serve as two lists. There may have been two lists, and I wasn't aware of the other one. Cause I remember bringing them forward, and we had the school committee, and then we also had a bunch of finance committee recommendations on the table.
There's a whole group of them. Cause Dave Martell had sent them to me, but I have them anyway. I'll, I'll share them.
They're riding. They, they hit for the whole year.
But that whole thing about the capital planning process is, is basically a, a big part of it.
I remember there was a thing about the timing of when they worked on stuff, and...
Right.
But I thought that we either decided not to approve them, or they got approved in some fashion, but...
Let's take another look.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on to DPW and clerical collective bargaining. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. So, the current contracts for both the clerical union and the DPW union expired the end of June. I have been in negotiations with both units since early spring, and I'm happy to say that we've reached a tentative agreement. Both bargaining units have ratified those agreements, and I am bringing them here for you tonight to vote on. These would be, both units are one-year wage agreements pending a wage and classification study. The entire agreement themselves are three-year agreements, but the wage portion is just a one-year.
Okay. Do we motion, take these up together? Do we motion?
No, I think we should do them separately, personally. But I, I'll, I'll make a motion when we approve the DPW tentative agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
No, well, I...
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I think, I only say this because, but, you know, we can, we can vote on it, and we're gonna, it's gonna pass, I'm sure. But, but I, I think it's important for the folks at home to understand what went into here, cause Lynn just gave a 30-second summary, and we're just approving something that nobody has any clue what's going on. And, and I'm not sure that, that's fair to the residents in town who are paying the bills here. So, you know, in, in general, I remember this Joe Cutie, Tom won't remember that name, where at a town meeting stood up and we passed a, a resident's, a, a citizen's petition that requires all these, all these bargaining agreements get put in the library, you know, when they're, when they're completed. So, I just wanna remind people at home that the, that the Joe Cutie rule, these, this completed bargaining agreement, union contract, should be in the library at, at some point. I'm sure we're aware of that, so it'll have details. But the, the bulk of the details, I think people need to know is a, is a, is a one-year wage agreement, as Lynn said, and it's a, a 3% increase for the first year. And, and we're doing that because of the issues we have, the DPW and the need to, to, to make sure we have a, a high-quality workforce in the DPW. And I just wanted to, you know, I get as many calls from people about the DPW as anything else, and I just wanna make sure people know that we've got a, pardon the expression, a new sheriff in town. And, and I think, you know, I have a lot of faith, and Lynn, I know you have a lot of faith in Sean Van Duzen, who's the director of our DPW, and people who have issues and concerns about that, and, you know, whether we hear, "Why are you paying them 3%?" and what is that and the other thing. It's because that's what they need to do to get a, a, a high-quality staff to, to do the things we need to do. I think from what we heard in the prior meetings here, over the next, hopefully, six to eight weeks, people start seeing work being done on all the collapsed storm sewers in, in, in town, and we've already seen some pavement being done on roads and, and things like that. And so, I think people need to understand that, that the, the proposal we have here that we're probably gonna approve is going a long way toward moving our DPW forward in a significant manner from where we've been in the past. And I think people at home need to hear that.
Alright, thank you, Mark.
All of the town employment contracts and collective bargaining agreements are on the website. So, this will be uploaded there as well.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the contract for the clerical union.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on this one?
Lynn, did you wanna give a summary of that?
Sure, I'm happy to. Happy to. So, similar, it's a one-year wage agreement, 3% increase. These are, there's very few positions that are covered under this bargaining unit. We are seeing the same issues that we're seeing with the DPW unit. We're not keeping up with salaries, which is why at the annual town meeting, we had asked for money to be set aside for a wage and classification study. So, the positions in this unit, as well as the DPW unit, will be done in a wage and classification study. That's why it's a one-year bargaining agreement for just wages. The entirety of the agreement is a three-year agreement. The clerical unit had very few changes with it, mostly just cleanup of language, implementing the Juneteenth holiday, and some other floating holidays were removed in place of standing holidays for consistency in office staffing. And it was approved by the bargaining unit and is now here for you tonight for a vote.
Okay. Alls in favor? Alright, Lynn, thank you very much for your hard work on those. I know that both sides, or everyone is happy that those are wrapped up for at least another few years. Alright, West County Notice of Intent to Incurred Debt, and it's our third notice. What's going on?
So, this is the third time this is coming to you. There is nothing to raise concern about with that. It is purely an update to the district agreement that had been brought forward a few months ago. The bond council for the building project wanted a renotice of the notice of incurred debt to happen after July 1st, when the new district agreement went into place. So, that's why it's coming to you tonight. You do not have to do anything with it. You don't have to take any action. It's just a notice of what is going to take place. If you chose to object, you could do that, but, again, this is the third time we've brought it forward.
And when will the, when they'll be open running there?
Yeah, that's the question.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
The sign's been in front of the building for two years.
Yeah, we are still in contract negotiations with the OPM, so we can't actually hire the architect until the OPM's on board. And then, construction can't start until after the design is completed.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll get a tour.
Yep.
Like I said, we used to have offices, I used to have offices there. It used to be the world headquarters, the US headquarters of Swining and Resin Company.
Wow.
It was the US headquarters of the Canadian chemical company.
Bill's been through a lot.
Yeah, it's built, that's right. It's had a few, few lives since then.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Lynn. I assume there's no objections. Street closure application, tree 413, for, street closure request for 104 Laurel Street. Go ahead, Mark.
I'm gonna make a motion whether we deny the street closure request.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion to deny?
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
He's gonna deny the street closure application on what basis?
So, uh...
Let's discuss it.
Yeah, okay.
Chief Stocks has recommended against approving this, and I believe this would be for tomorrow and the day after. And there's been no notice put up, right, on Laurel?
No. So, just to give a little bit of background, this application was received Wednesday afternoon, late Wednesday afternoon, to close Laurel Street at 104. And I think you could read in Chief Stocks' addendum that he attached to the application, "A project like this to close down Laurel Street in that area would require a more in-depth discussion for traffic and safety purposes in order to close down that section of the road." So, I believe Chief Stocks voted to, oh, excuse me, wrote a letter to not recommend for those, for those reasons that a little bit more attention needs to be paid into this, excuse me, put into this before work is done, not just a week's notice to residents and all of that.
If this is absolutely the only way to do this, we can have a discussion, but as is, there needs to be a lot more notice. This is a big, this would be a big deal in town. This is one of our major throughways, and it, it can't be done on a week's notice with no notice to people in, in the area. Mark?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Tom, so why, on what basis? First of all, like, lack of notice, but also, closing both lanes, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Laurel Street
Yeah.
seems to me like, let's, let's see if we can get it done, rather than figure, I mean, if they'd come forward and said, "Look, we're gonna try to do this on a Saturday or a Sunday. When there's less traffic, we'll close one lane, and we'll, you know, cut the trees and lower it, and we'll still have police duty officers letting another lane go through." But there, there is, in my perception, little forethought given to writing this thing out. It's, you know, I didn't even know when it was, when it was submitted. It says it was submitted the 8th for the 16th, so it was submitted a, a week in advance. And more importantly, and then, police officers said, we need, police chief said, "We need far more to look."
Yeah. Oh, two details, right?
Well, you need, it, it doesn't even say that. I mean, we could, we could make that a, a requirement if we wanted to, but even then, we're talking about closing Laurel, Laurel Street without...
It's one of the busiest sections.
Somebody had say, you know, "What are they gonna do about detouring traffic? Are they gonna put up the signs? Does our DPW have to get involved and put up signs if they're gonna create a deto..." I mean, to close Laurel Street, which I looked at where this is, I mean, you gotta, you're closing it basically between Converse Street and, and Williams Street.
You'd have to go down Dover Road.
Well, who knows what you're gonna have to do? But no, there's, you know, I mean, there should be maps along with this, saying, "Here's where we propose it be detoured," and so...
I got you. I got you.
So, that's the basis, if I wish I may...
No, the question I have, Michael, is, you know, this was submitted on the 8th. It was scheduled for tomorrow. Chief Stocks said not to recommend it on the 10th.
So, the 10th is the day I actually received it. The 8th is the day the application was written. The 10th is the day it came to me.
Yeah.
Whether that was put in my mailbox by the applicant, or I don't know how it got to me. It was in my mailbox.
Alright. But the tree company, have they been notified that we're gonna vote on it tonight? Or have they been notified that this was not recommended?
I, I'm, I'm not sure if they really understood the process. I think they may have believed that it was more of a, "We'll apply for this, and it'll just, it'll just happen." But I don't think they understood because of the...
So, you're concerned tomorrow morning, we're gonna wake up and they're gonna close down the street?
Your concern is, you know, you look at a private business owner, he, he obviously didn't follow the procedure. But if he shows up there with a crew tomorrow, he's gotta pay all those people, and he can't do any cunning. And so, I, I'm not saying we should vote it in, but I, there, there, something may be wrong with the process. He should've known, like, sooner than tomorrow that it's not gonna happen.
Well, based on the meeting schedules, that's just kinda how it...
Well, but in fact, what I think Tom's point is, this says street closure information, and this doesn't say request for street closure approval. Right? Nowhere does it say, "I'm seeking approval from the..." This just says, "I'm gonna be closing the street." From, I mean, I don't see it that way, but I can see where a contractor might read it that way. And they think they're gonna come, come close the street tomorrow.
So, he could show up to the crew tomorrow and not be able to do the work, and he still has to pay all those people, and so...
Most contractors know
You would think.
that they reach out to the police department. If, most, most know that there's a process, or they would reach out to DPW first and have a conversation.
Yeah.
It, I would say, I've only been here three years, but I've never seen a street closure permit come in like this.
Yeah. So, when will he get the call?
Well, he's already been informed of the, of the process.
Yeah.
He selected the date without knowing whether he had approval or not.
Alright. So, he already knows that the police didn't approve of it?
Well, we were, I, I'm not sure if he, the police have reached out to him to give them their suggestions and their feedback about it.
Yeah.
The, where it lies is it comes to the select board after to do the...
Okay. So, the police has actually, you think they've reached out to him and told him?
I can confirm, I can confirm that tomorrow. And if they have, I could, I'd be happy to.
Which would be a nice thing to do. I mean, and again, you know, it's just a, it's a, it's just formality for someone who didn't know that, you know, he could be just, you know, that we're gonna say no, because you aren't trying to close two lanes of traffic on a main street for all day.
For dual days. I've never seen a, to, to, to be fair as well, I've never seen an application come, come like this. Also, it's usually for a block party, or to close a section of a road for a certain amount of period, or for the lacrosse jamboree, which was something different. Yeah, this, this, given the timeframe, was a little bit different.
Is there a lead time on the website saying, "Get your application in for a street closure"? How long does it say?
I think it's 14 days.
Yeah, 14 days. Select board has a month to act on...
So, that didn't hit it anyway?
Going into it, didn't matter.
So, I, I just, if the residents who are trying to take down these trees, I, I know this house is sold. I presumably just moved in to town. Nothing against you. This is, you live on a major street. I, I hope you can work this out. The town, nobody wants to stop you from taking down trees if that's the right thing to do, but it's gotta be done right. So, we have to have the notice done in the right time and work with the police. That's why we get a police recommendation from Chief Stocks. Memo, "There's a lot of work to do here to make this safe and palatable." One of the things in his memo is that this could impede emergency traffic if something happens. So, that's, there's a lot to, to consider.
Just, just as a comment, I, I remember, it wasn't too long ago, just months ago, that on Laurel Street between Converse and Dover, somebody needed this tree taken down, and it was dead as a doornail. And, and they, you know, were up on the sidewalk and lifting it up. And yeah, I, I think I drove by there, and they stopped cars for, you know, two minutes while they kinda swung the tree out over the road. But they figured it out, and, and they didn't close the road, and, and, you know...
These are big trees, but still, I, I don't know. I'm not a tree guy, but yeah.
I hear you.
I hope, I hope we can figure something out.
Close, you know, close one lane, do it on a Saturday morning when there's less, less traffic. Talk about, you know, show us, show me a map of how you, how you proposed that we're gonna have to detour traffic, and say, "Yes, we've arranged for police details to, to take care of," you know? But this is just a, "Don't worry, we'll take care of it. We're gonna close both lanes," and...
Well, we, we may get another request.
Well, and, and that's fine, Tom. And it, but, and if it's done properly, I got no, you know, I, like, like Josh, I wanna prove, prove people doing what they wanna do for their house, but they can't close down the, the main dragon down for 12 days.
If they can work with Chief Stocks, get him on board, then it's hard to argue with that.
Alright. So, we have a motion. It has been seconded, and...
Yeah. Any further discussion, man? Alright. All those in favor of denying the motion, the application?
Yeah.
Alright. And then, we have a couple pieces of correspondence. We already discussed the car chargers, but, so, thank you to the Zimmers for writing in, and as always, thank you to anyone who writes in. in and uh as always, thank you to anyone who writes in to us and uh otherwise, any discussion on that? Oh, okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Alright, uh, all those in favor? Alright, thank you very much. Good night, everyone.